Good evening and welcome to the Edina Planning Commission meeting for April 9, 2014. My name is Kevin Staunton. I am the Chair of the Commission. Jackie, could you please call the roll?
Yes, Commissioner Shorah.
Here.
Commissioner Potts.
Here.
Commissioner Lee.
Here.
Commissioner Gilbert.
Here.
Commissioner Paul.
Here.
Commissioner Olson.
Here.
Commissioner Carr.
Here.
Commissioner Platter.
Chair Staunton.
Here, thank you. Next up on the agenda is approval of the meeting agenda. I understand, Carrie, that there is one change. Item 6C, preliminary rezoning and variances, as I understand, the applicant has requested a continuance until our May 14 meeting. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So if anyone was here to attend the public hearing on that matter, we will not be addressing that issue tonight. It will be on the May 14 meeting. I apologize if you came all the way over to comment on that, but make time to come back on the 14th of May. So next up, oh, so approval of the meeting agenda. With that amendment, I would entertain a motion to approve the meeting agenda.
So moved.
Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, say nay. The meeting agenda is approved. Next up is approval of the consent agenda. The only item we have on this evening's consent agenda are the minutes of our regular meeting of March 12, 2014. Are there any modifications, additions, subtractions, corrections on the minutes? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
In a second?
Second.
Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, say nay. Motion carries and the consent agenda is approved. Next up is community comment. This is the portion of the meeting where we invite members of the public to come forward and comment on an issue or issues that are not on this evening's agenda. And so if there's anyone here tonight that wanted to share something with us that is not on the agenda this evening, this would be the time to come forward to one of the side microphones, state your name and address, and tell us what your concern is. Not seeing a rush to the microphone, I would entertain a motion to close community comment.
So moved.
In a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, say nay. Motion carries. The next item up is the public hearing section of our meeting. We have two public hearings this evening. The first is comprehensive plan amendments, preliminary rezoning and preliminary development plan, Lennar Multi-Family Communities LLC, 6725 York Avenue.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Potts.
Similarly to when this project came before us for sketch plan review, I'm going to recuse myself tonight, and you asked for a brief explanation of that, which I appreciate. We met recently with Roger Knutson, the city attorney, and reviewed some of these things and learned that conflict of interest is rather narrowly defined as financially based in terms of what's expected of us. And that's not the case here. That's not why I'm doing this tonight, but the fact that my company works with the applicant tonight on a different project in a different city, I think still has the appearance of potentially being a conflict and perhaps inappropriate. And I think on all our commissions and on our council, we have to take that into effect beyond the rather narrow financially-based definition of conflict. So having said that, I'll step out and rejoin you for the next item. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Potts. So with that item of business taken care of, Carrie, do you want to introduce this project?
Yes, thank you, Chair, members of the commission. This property is located in the southeast corner of the city, in the Southdale area. The site is currently zoned PCD III, planned commercial district, our more intense commercial zoning district. Located on the site is the existing, it's the old Wick's Furniture site, and there are also five single-family homes that face Xerxes. The site where the furniture store is currently located has the commercial zoning district, and then the five homes have a residential zoning district designation to them. Couple of quick photographs of the existing furniture store and the single-family homes on the right. What the applicant is proposing here is to tear down those structures, the single-family homes and the furniture store, and build a new 242-unit upscale apartment. It would also include 12,500 square feet of retail space on the first level that would face York Avenue. Couple of renderings of what the building would look like. As you see, there would be a parking field adjacent to York to serve the retail space. The renderings on the screen here face Richfield, face the Xerxes side. As you see, they've introduced podium height, as was discussed somewhat in our sketch plan review. To give you a quick shot of the elevation, the area here highlighted in red, that's the retail space. So York Avenue would be on this side. There would be two levels of underground parking that would be accessed from the north and the south. That would be for the apartments. There would be a green space above the parking deck in this location here, and amenity pool deck in this side here. This is aerial shot of that. You can see the courtyard green space, and then that pool area that is again elevated up on the second level above the parking deck. Again, the parking field along York. Visitor parking for the apartments would be on the north side and south side of the building. Extensive trails would be introduced in and around the site, two trails or sidewalks that would go through the site from Xerxes. It would provide access from residents of Richfield into the Southdale area. There's one on the north and south side. Up the mouses died on me there. The pointer is, maybe we want to get a battery for that. Just to refresh the planning commission, as you recall, last fall, this project, the applicants came forward with a sketch plan review that went both to the planning commission and city council. The rendering on the screen here is the building that was considered back then. So the elevation that you're seeing here faces Xerxes. So the original plan was to incorporate six stories right up to the street 25 feet from the property line. There also was a access from Xerxes, a loading dock. This is the site plan that was considered. So you can see the access onto Xerxes as well as the 25-foot setback in blue up to the Xerxes Avenue front property line there. So there was a number of concerns that were raised by planning commission and city council at the sketch plan review, primarily focusing on that side that faces Richfield. And so what the applicant has done here, they've done a really nice job in addressing those concerns. They've reduced the number of units from 273 to 242. That reduces the overall density from 59 units to 52. The floor area ratio that's proposed here is reduced to 1.27, originally 1.55. And again, they eliminated, they've eliminated that loading dock that you saw off of Xerxes and that access that would have brought traffic through Xerxes and into Richfield. They've created podium height along Xerxes to lessen that impact. And I'll go back. So you see the 25-foot setback that they were proposing. They've also shifted the entire building 12 feet to the west. So the building now has a 37-foot setback in addition to the podium, the podium height. They've created a better pedestrian connections through and around the site, and they've provided some sustainable green features. So those are some of the items that they've done to try to address those initial concerns. So this is a two-step development process, typical of all of our PUD rezonings. So the first step, the request that's before the commission, this is a four-vote item because of there are three comprehensive guide plan amendments required. The comp plan designates the site for four stories and 48 feet, and they're proposing six stories and 70 feet. Floor area ratio maximum of one. They're proposing to increase that to 1.27. And then the regiding of those land use designations for the single-family homes, from single-family to the community activity center. Then the preliminary rezoning from PCD III and R1 to a PUD zoning district and a preliminary development plan. So should the council approve this first step, they would then be required to come back for a second step, and that would be obtaining the final rezoning, final development plan, and then we would adopt an ordinance that would create that new PUD zoning district for this site. So just to quickly go through additionally some of the site plan elements, a traffic and parking study was done for the site. Chuck Rickert from WSB is here to answer any questions that you may have. The study does conclude that the existing roadway system can support the project here, and that parking is adequate. The study does note recommend a left turn into the site. Currently, it's just a right-in, right-out for both access points. And so what WSB is recommending is a left turn into the site. Now, this is a county road, so that has to be negotiated with the county. So those meetings will be set up here next week, I believe, as would be the first meeting with the county to try to pitch this left turn in. In regard to landscaping, based on the perimeter of the site, 48 overstory trees are acquired. The proposal here is for 66, so it exceeds our ordinance, and we're supposed to have a full complement of understory shrubs. They are proposing that as well. Those types of detail, we would look at a little more closely as part of the final development plan. But what you're seeing here is code compliant. Proposed loading for the facility, loading for the retail space would happen in front of the store and potentially at the side. Move-ins for the apartments would occur on the south end, and the trash enclosures are also within the buildings themselves. In terms of building material, the applicant's proposing a high-quality brick, cast stone, stucco, and the Edina limestone on the retail space. Again, this is preliminary development plan. The applicant would be required to bring forward materials board. Then we'd get into the specifics, but that is what they're proposing this evening. We'd get into the specifics with the materials board with the second phase. The city of Edina has a setback requirement for buildings that are five to six stories tall to R1, single-family residential zoning districts. Now, across the street in Richfield, we have single-family homes over there, so that ordinance doesn't apply in Richfield. But if that property were single-family homes in the city of Edina, 140-foot setback would be required. The setback requirement is twice the height of the building. To give you a graphic that shows that, so again, it's the height of the building times two is the required setback for the nearest property line for single-family homes. So what's proposed here this evening with the six-story building would be 122 feet from the Richfield property lines. So if that were the city of Edina, variance would be required or flexibility in the PUD. But I do also want to point out that within the city of Richfield's comprehensive plan, what you're seeing here is the land use plan for the city of Richfield. Let's see, this graphic shows it a little better. This is 66th Street here on the north and 70th Street, and the area that's highlighted in yellow is guided for medium-density residential in Richfield, which brings with it a proposal for seven to 12 units per acre. So we'll see it a little bit later. So the adjacent property, Richfield, envisions for medium-density and not the single-family. Also, the applicant has, a shadow study was requested to determine the impacts on the single-family homes again, and it's difficult to see here with the proposed, or with the screen, anyway. The impact for shadows is in the months of December, between three and five would be when those shadows are cast. So we're not seeing a significant impact with shadows. In regard to the comprehensive plan, I'm having trouble catching my breath here. I apologize. We've seen another applicant that had that same issue, and I'm not sure what's going on, but I'll try to get through it here. The site is guided in our comprehensive plan for FAR of one, and the language in the screen here is our community activity center is described as the most intense district in terms of uses, height, and coverage, but the maximum FAR is one. So we're suggesting, sorry, we're suggesting language here that builds in some flexibility, that the FAR could be exceeded, given if we look at proximity to utilities, level of transit service available, impacts on adjacent roads, below-grade parking, provision of open space, affordable housing, sustainable design principles, pedestrian circulation, and podium height. A lot of those principles are proposed here within this project. So what we're suggesting here in a potential comprehensive plan amendment is to build in that flexibility, rather than just allowing them to go to, say, a 1.5 floor area ratio, be on a case-by-case basis. One thing, too, I want to mention is while the comp plan indicates that this community activity center is the most intense zoning district or classification in the city, in practice, the 50th and France area, which holds a PCD II zoning, the floor area ratios that are allowed there are up to 1.5. So that's actually a more intense commercial district than the Southdale area, even though our comprehensive plan describes it as that is our most intense district. So with the proposal here, we'd build in that flexibility. So in terms of the land use piece of the proposed amendment, you see the single-family homes here are guided in our comprehensive plan as low-density residential, all surrounded by the CAC on all sides. So incorporating that into the CAC seems reasonable and consistent with those land uses. So and again, in Richfield, all adjacent to the CAC here is where Richfield has that guided for medium-density. Again, here's 66th, and here's 70th. So this whole strip here is guided in Richfield for medium-density. In terms of the height change, this again is a page from the comprehensive plan regarding height, and four stories is the maximum in that district. But so what staff is suggesting, if we're comfortable in increasing that in our comprehensive plan, is building in flexibility again, suggesting that the height may be increased to six stories if podium height is utilized on York and Xerxes, subject to review by the city council, to build in that flexibility rather than just allowing them to go to six feet or six stories. So the primary issues for consideration for the planning commission are the proposed amendments regarding land use, height, and density reasonable to allow the proposed development, and is the proposed rezoning to PUD appropriate for the site. In this case, staff believes they are in both cases. In regard to the comprehensive plan amendments, staff feels that the land uses are consistent, as I've touched on, that the podium height is being utilized on both Xerxes and the York side. You can see the podium here as it faces Xerxes, and the podium, while it's not as great on this side, it would extend out two stories, eight feet out. Again, the applicant has tried to address that issue on the Richfield side by shifting it in another 12 feet from the sketch plan proposal. So they've moved the building in 12 feet and then introduced that smaller podium height. And again, the comprehensive plan calls for this area as the most intense district in terms of use, height, and coverage in the city. So we feel that the 1.27 FAR is reasonable in this case. And again, the roadways do support the project. In regard to the PUD, staff believes that the PUD is appropriate in this instance. Again, it's a mixed-use project, residential and retail, which the PUD seeks to obtain. It is a pedestrian-friendly development. There's the two sidewalks, east and west, that go through the site. There is, I should point that out a little more. Yeah, the pedestrian connections. So they would be proposing a boulevard-style sidewalk along York Avenue and along Xerxes, and then again, the east-west connections through the site on the north and south side. And there would be five access points from York into the site. Again, the two on the north and south, and then three on the interior that would come through here, and then one through the middle, similar to the YMCA project where we had the one main entrance through the middle. So it is a pedestrian-friendly development in addition to the sidewalks that access the Xerxes side here. There are sustainable principles that are proposed here. I'll let the applicant go through those in more detail. And again, as part of a final development plan, we would work out those details as well. The PUD ensures that this precise building is, would be built, as again, that's built into the zoning ordinance that we would consider, that this is the project that would have to be built. If they were to have any changes, they would have to come back through the rezoning process or an amendment to that zoning district. The uses, again, are complementary in this district. Again, the future land use plan in Richfield being medium-density is, they see that area as a transition into our more intense development here. Meets a lot of the goals of our comprehensive plan, as I've spelled out in the staff report. One thing that I didn't touch on is affordable housing. That's another goal of the PUD. What staff is suggesting is that 10% of the units be for affordable housing, kind of our standard between 10 and 20% that we try to seek with all developments. How that comes to be would be worked out, again, as part of a final development proposal, but staff is recommending 10% of the units be affordable. So with that in conclusion, staff is recommending approval of the comprehensive plan amendments, the rezoning to PUD subject to the findings and conditions that are outlined. I'll turn it back to the commission for questions, and I'm feeling a little better.
All right. Thank you, Carrie.
Thank you.
So here's how I'd like to proceed on this. I'd like to, we can ask Mr. Teague some questions. I'd like to confine it for now to just questions as opposed to kind of discussion. Then I'd like to invite the applicant up to make a presentation, and we can follow that with questions. We may, once we've finished with the applicant, then I'd like to open the public hearing here from folks who are here to comment on this, and then close the public hearing. Oftentimes, when we have public hearings, we get questions from the audience, and so we'd like to try and address those. Mr. Rickert is here with us this evening, and he can address traffic issues and then transition to having a discussion among the planning commission members and deliberating. We may have some additional questions for the applicant at that point. So having given you a little time to catch your breath, you okay?
Thank you.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Teague? Commissioner Platter.
Yeah, Carrie, I have two questions for you. One is the plan you have up right now, what are the extents of the sidewalk that this site is building? Like, in the top of the page, it shows the sidewalk still going. I believe that's north. Where, are they building that, or where's that tying into, or what's, you know, what's happening outside the boundaries of this project?
Yeah, they wouldn't be responsible for putting in those sidewalks. That's just to show in the future, should that property develop, that that would be extended.
Okay. And assuming the same, same things would happen on the other
Correct.
ends of this, too. And then can you go back to the page where you showed the distance because of the height requirements and the distance to the Richfield neighbor or the housing for one second? Right there. So that, that 122 feet, that is to the property line of the house?
Correct.
Do you know how far it is to the house or to the homes?
I don't believe this is an exact representation of the setback of that house, so I'm not entirely certain.
Okay. So in
In general, it's probably a 30-foot setback, so another 30 feet, give or take five feet.
Okay. So in general, the property line you're showing is off of Xerxes, off of the right-of-way of Xerxes
Correct.
and then on a private property.
Correct.
You're speculating that approximately 30 feet goes, you know, to the next home. I'd have to look at the area, I guess. Okay. I was just curious on that, how close or how far away they would actually be in essence. All right. Thank you.
Commissioner Carr.
Just a quick question. In the front of the building, well, which is, I suppose, west and on the north side, there's actually a little seventh story, just something jutting up. I don't know if it's habitable or not, but I'm assuming that it's not considered a story. That's an exception, or am I looking at the wrong? This photo right here has the
Yes, right there.
Right there. On the bottom photo, on the left, right there.
Yeah, you know, I'm not entirely sure. That might be a good question for the applicant as to what that is up there.
Yeah. I mean, I don't know if there's certain exceptions. I know that in some of the other applications we've looked at, there've been exceptions for height if they put things like air conditioners on our roof, et cetera. Anyways, I just raise that as an issue.
Commissioner Olson.
Just a quick, on the loading dock and the truck movement, can you maybe walk through that again, and how the trucks are entering the site now, and like the retail product line, how that works?
Yes. Trucks would move in this direction here. They could park in front and be a front-loaded entry for deliveries. There also would be an option to pull up along the side, along here. There's a doorway here that would provide a, into this back hallway, so that would be another option. There is a trash enclosure area in this location here, so trucks would pull in, and likely they would have to back out. The applicant could potentially expand on that if I'm wrong on any of those things, but
Sure. Okay. And then maybe just a quick question for Mr. Rickert with the traffic. Just, I know I missed the last fall when they talked about it, but, you know, when people are leaving the site, and it's right-in, right-out in the left end, but to go to the, have you studied, like, are many people wanting to go to the south? And then what do you do? How do you do that? Do you have to go up and go on 66 and around?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, you're exactly right. You know, they would either come out of the site, turn right, go up to 66, do a U-turn, and go south, or go, turn left, go over to France, or turn right, you know, and back their way back around. So that's what was assumed as part of the study, is that type of a movement.
Okay. And that's not a problem?
No.
Okay. I didn't know you could do a U-turn there. Note to file. Let's see. I think I'll let the applicant talk tonight. Thanks.
Other questions for Mr. Teague? I just want to be clear, Carrie, looks like from page 14 of your report contains basically, if this were a PCD III, which I guess I'm assuming that you're kind of, you're making the assumption that the PCD III would be the closest zoning code that we would use if we weren't using a PUD here.
Correct. And that's the current zoning today.
Oh, it is the current zoning for
It is.
Well, it isn't for the homes, is it?
Correct. Correct. That's our one, single-family.
So you're assuming the PCD-3 would cover all of these properties?
If it were to cover all the properties, right.
And so that highlights the things that would not be able to be accomplished without variances. And so we're talking about three different setbacks on the, the front setback, the side on the north side, and the side on the south side are all short of the requirement, the building height, and the floor area ratio.
Correct.
So those are the things that were, that the applicant is asking us to accomplish through the planned unit development?
Correct. Yep.
Okay. Other questions for Mr. Teague? Commissioner Olson.
Sorry. I read that Hennepin County Public Works recommended widening the boulevard. Do you know if that's been done on Xerxes?
Yet we haven't had those discussions with the county, and they made some recommendations on the landscaping as well, so that's something that we would have to work out with the county.
Is that part of the conditions of approval? I don't know if I saw that, or was that in there or diagnostic?
It's not. It's a good catch.
Okay.
All right. Any further questions for Mr. Teague? All right, seeing none. Thank you, Carrie. I'm sure there may be questions, additional questions later. And I would invite the applicants to come forward and make a presentation at this time. Welcome back.
It's nicer weather.
It is. Couldn't be worse.
Yeah. Peter Shumaleski, 2029 West North Avenue, Chicago. Chairman, fellow commissioners, thank you very much for having us back. It's good to be here. The changes we made, Carrie liked so much, he took his breath away, so hopefully he'll like it the same amount. Just give you a quick history of Lennar. Myself, I'll introduce myself, Peter Shumaleski, Development Manager with Lennar Multifamily Communities. And I'm here with Aaron Rosseth, Principal and Head Architect at ESG, a local architecture firm here. As you may know, Lennar's has roots back to 1954. It's a home builder. It's a publicly traded company across the nation. It's actually the largest home builder here in the Twin Cities area. And in the past few decades, they've diversified themselves into different entities, one of which being Lennar Multifamily Communities, which I'm a part of. And we specialize in doing high-end condo-style rental apartments in first-tier-type cities. And one thing that's unique about us is that we're not a merchant builder. We are a long-term hold builder, all the way to the impact of the management company that Lennar actually has a management company that could very well manage this project as well. So this is something that we're very interested in making this the right project, in the right area, with the right materials, the right design, and to be the right neighbors. Because it's not something that we build and then walk. We build and we stay, and we want to be integrated into this, into the community. So it's a unique thing about Lennar, and it's nice to work with ESG that knows the ins and outs of these communities and where we're hopefully going to be a part of. So glad to be back. We were here in August and in September, and we had a lot of great feedback about what we were very happy with when we proposed at that time. And I think kudos to the commissioners and to city council, who really pushed us on certain levels. Because that is a building that, like I said, we were proud of, but there were certain conditions. We had a street going through Xerxes. We had some flat facades. And I'll let Aaron discuss more the details of that, but we were pushed to really look at the sensitivities to York Avenue and the retail, and to Xerxes, and to the Richfield residents. And I think in the past six months, we've done two things. We've gone back and we've totally redesigned. We've tried to keep the integrity of the original building and the architecture and the language of the building, so to speak, the same, while really bringing back some of the building components and undulating it a bit more to have those sensitivities. And the second thing we've done is taken our time to do option agreements with the homes on Xerxes, and hired a local broker here, Representative Lennar, met with each of the homeowners, and discussed their needs and wants and timelines, and really went through to make sure that they were put in a favorable position, so that, knowing that our timeline was coming up, that they would have some options in there. And we carefully delegated that and made sure that we were sensitive to where they were. So we're really excited to be back. I think ESG has done a tremendous job of listening to the commissioners and listening to city council, and really pushing this building to the point that it's at today, which I think is a tremendous redesign from what we had showed you previously. So I'll pass that off to Aaron, and happy to answer any questions after he's concluded.
Thank you, Mr. Shumaleski.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chair and fellow commissioners. My name is Aaron Rosseth. I'm with ESG Architects in Minneapolis. The presentation that we're going to give tonight is, Carrie does such a great job of describing kind of the differences between what you've seen in the past and what you're seeing today, and I'm just, I'm going to highlight a few of those details and try not to repeat things that he had said. The description of the project that you have in your packages is a meaningful statement to us. I'm not going to go through these, other than to say that the design principles that my firm is very proud of being part of, and they guide us through sustainability and making great city buildings. We consider ourselves city builders. We think that this area is an incredible area to act as a transition from a very dense commercial district to single-family neighborhoods in Richfield. And as Carrie noted, the transition has also been thought about through the Richfield neighbors in terms of what a very intense commercial district to mixed-use environment to a mid-rise multifamily development to single-family. So that section quality of intense to single-family is important, and I think that the pathways that Carrie highlighted in terms of getting people through these different developments is very important amongst all the materials and the definition of the architecture at the end of the day. So the language here is in a written form, and hopefully you'll see it also through the designs. I don't need to tell you where the site is anymore. This was a quick diagram that we used in the first presentation, just to, it's something that we look at in terms of context even beyond your zoning standards. There's a lot of height in this area, and I think that where that height is appropriate is obviously guided by your zoning, but it's a very sensitive subject for us as well as you transition into neighborhoods. So what I'm going to do, I have these slides lined up side by side. So this is the previous design scheme, and we're hoping that this is a good tool, especially during question, the QA portion, to go back and forth between them. But just for presentation's sake, what you're going to see is the before slide and the now slide. A lot of the five ways through the site or into the site from York were common, were pieces that we maintained in this new design. We certainly are making more emphasis on how that pathway can be more exploratory and dynamic as you get into the more, into the pathways toward Xerxes. And so that meandering path from the single-family neighborhood, and then the more rigid path as you're getting into the higher intense areas, we feel are equally safe, but it just created a nice variety in and through the site. The other piece, if you look back on here, we didn't quite have a full understanding of this portion of that last property that Lennar is planning to purchase, and this is the actual property line that goes north. And so I'm going to go back one more time, and this, we understood at the time that this was just a flat property line. It actually extends north. And so the concept for that is, we're still developing it, would like your feedback, but that that would be an open, grassy, park-like area that could be accessed from Xerxes, off of that pathway. Some other items to point out, we eliminated the access, as Carrie noted, through the site onto Xerxes. And so the only physical connections from the building to Xerxes are these front porches, which you'll be able to see much better in the perspective, with sidewalks going out into the street. One of the, one of the things that you don't see here that we are also going to do is extend several of these sidewalks all the way to Xerxes, so there's pathways to the road. Eventually, and hopefully, these sidewalks will connect north-south, as one of the commissioners had asked, to create a network of sidewalks, of safe pedestrian access points, north and south to other adjacent properties. The retail space has gone down considerably, from 22,000 to approximately 12,500. And the, the impact of that is, the original idea for this retailer was going to be another grocer. That grocer, it didn't work out, and so the idea is that these retailers will become something very fitting to the residences of this site, but also to the community at large. And so we're looking at everything from high-end restaurants to yoga studios, something complimentary to both the residences and the neighbors at large. Couple of other highlights from the site plan. We removed the parking ramp going down to the first, the underground level of parking, brought it outside, which made this a much more efficient plate on the inside, so there isn't any internal ramping. Loading and move-in, Carrie described it well. I'm just going to highlight a couple of things. Move-in, this is a trash room here, but this is also considered for us our move-in staging area. And so moving vans would be able to pull in here, and then the management would work, would basically cone off two or three stalls here, so the move-in trucks during those times would be able to pull in, back up, and then come back out as a three-point turn, which is very typical. The garbage would do a very similar thing. We have two trash chutes and two recycling rooms here and here, as I'm indicating on the plan. And a very similar turning movement would happen during garbage day, where the garbage truck will pull in. This would be coned off by the management group, and then they'd back up and pull back out. The retailer's a little bit easy, especially if they do get a high-end restaurant, where deliveries would happen on off-times and off-hours, probably the morning in front of the retail area. The yellow portion is still what we consider our lobbying leasing center, and so one of the commissioners had asked what that extension was, and it's actually not an extra level. What we're trying to do architecturally is to create an acknowledgement of front door, so it's just an architectural feature. Maybe that unit has two-story windows or something in a living room. Those are some of the details that we've been discussing. This is, again, we're going to go previous design to the design now. One of the, one of the exciting things that I think happened during the time we had to consider all of your feedback, the council's feedback, neighbors, and the city staff, the one courtyard design really created some boundaries and barriers for us that shaped the building in a very straight and linear form, and didn't allow it to be playful and open up throughout the site. And so what we did, I think, is a much better, improved design. And if you follow your eye along each one of these plan pieces, it allowed much more of an undulated facade, where it broke up the architecture in a way that we just, we weren't able to do very successfully with the single courtyard approach. So there's two courtyards. Both are accessible. One of the green features that we're looking at is doing as much green vegetation on here as possible to help control some of that stormwater runoff. We call this the quiet terrace, so this is more, it's graphic for the people that live above it, but it's also a very nice garden-like setting for those residences that are on the second floor that have patios directly connecting to it. I'm losing my breath, too. Excuse me. The main patio amenity deck faces southeast now, and the idea of moving it to that position was that we would get much more solar access, and the front facade along York, I think, really improved because of it, because of that deep setback of this wing or portion of the building. The one area where the retail, we think, needs larger height is towards that front portion, and then their back-of-house actually tucks under this second-level roof area, is what you're seeing with this X-shaped dashed line. The amenities that surround this pool deck, then, are similar to what we talked about before. A large clubroom and fitness area directly off of it, outdoor barbecues and fire pits, cabanas, sunning areas, congregation areas, and also a few private patios that would face that with a green buffer on the, between them and the amenity deck. Again, this is the previous design, where it was that big, large, single courtyard. I think this illustrates pretty well how confined that solar access would have been, with five stories of units facing that single courtyard, with just a little peek-a-boo of opening here versus what we're proposing now, in orienting these decks towards the south and then opening it up also on the east here. One of the things that you're seeing on the right-hand side, I'm going to do this slowly, is there's a lot of pieces that are coming out of this, the facade facing Xerxes. It'll be much better illustrated in perspective, but what we've done is, there's a series of bay windows and setbacks, two different times in the actual facade, which we think are creating a really good relief and step back, creating this podium expression. This is the large underground parking. There's one level, and then the upper level is surrounded by different uses. This is our metrics. Just to highlight a few things, as Carrie mentioned, we went from 273 units to 242. One thing to point out there, one of the feedbacks we had received from not only the council, but several individuals that were excited about this project, was bigger units. And per square foot basis, this will be one of the largest, similar to Cornelia Place that's been around for a while. That's one of the largest square foot-per-unit projects in this area, probably the largest. And with the demographics that we've talked about before, we think that people moving out of their single-family homes in Edina that want to stay in Edina, we believe that that's one of the appropriate demographics that we'll be targeting to be leasing, so the units are large. This is a section quality that Carrie described across the site. This is the amenity deck, and then the quiet courtyard, as we call it. And you can see here how we're creating a front porch amongst that two-story podium expression. We set the building back again for three stories, and then again on the top level. Again, this is the previous design, and this was the, I'll call it a tower element or beacon element, that we just, we really wanted to highlight or showcase that front door. I'm not sure, at the end of the day, it'll be that high or that we'll have glazing, but the concept is that it's just acknowledging kind of a front door. In this, this is the previous again, so if you look at this and how flat this became, we tried with the first scheme to give some relief, but essentially that front face was aligned with one corridor going across the entire thing. And by opening that courtyard up along York, we just think it made much more of a meaningful broken-up building. up along York, we just think it made much more of a meaningful, broken-up building. Very similar materials to what we talked about before. In this elevation, this building in the buff color is all brick, and this building is also brick. Some of the infill pieces, we actually brought a material board. I'm not sure you want me to pass this around, but we can, if you want to. So the composition, the materials will be brick, two different colors of brick, stucco on a majority of each of the elevations, and I can point that out also if you'd like me to. It's also in your packages. Some metal panel and some fiber cement panel. So again, this is the previous design. And this is the new. Many of the features that we felt were important, and I think you felt important from the past, where the congregation areas or gathering areas, those are, still exist on both sides as part of that sidewalk network coming into the site. One of the things that came up in both conversation with you and the council was just how awful this is as an experience right now. And so, we're taking cues from other areas that you've been developing and creating about a seven-and-a-half-foot boulevard landscape strip from the edge of the curb to the sidewalk, really trying to create as safe of an environment as possible for these pedestrian connections. Again, this is the previous design along York. And this is the new design. So, some of the things that I'd like to highlight are just the scale features of this, both vertically and horizontally. Each of these townhomes are expressed in a way that horizontally, we're breaking it up, so they're similar sizes to the way that a single-family residence would exist on the other side of the street, in terms of horizontal massing, creating that as a two-story environment and as a podium expression, and then setting the building back. And what you're seeing here is that bay projection, where, again, it's giving, I think, a little bit of playfulness along the facade, north-south, on the York elevation, to really break that up, I think, in a meaningful way. Did I say York? I apologize. This is Xerxes. Previous design, again, along Xerxes. Again, it was 25-foot setback, and we've pushed it back even further. And then, in the new scheme, along Xerxes, again, that relief at both after the podium and then the bay projections on top. So that's the end of my presentation. We'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Rossett. Questions for Mr. Rossett or Mr. Shimaleski? Commissioner Carr?
I just want to compliment you on the redesign. I think it looks much more interesting from an architectural standpoint. It looks like there's more green space. And anyways, great job.
Can I ask, on the Xerxes side, where we do the podium step-back, I think, Mr. Rossett, you talked about after two stories, it steps back, and then after five stories, it steps back?
Yeah.
Can you give me the dimensions on that? That's what I'm kind of interested, how far does it, you know, I see this step-back, but I can't quite, and the numbers were a little too small for my eyes on the...
Chair Stoughton and fellow commissioners, let me go to the section in here. So there's a couple of layers and events that are happening. This front porch portion will be the first introduction element towards Xerxes. So that'll be the front porch. So from the, right here, I'm highlighting the bay projection line that comes out, five feet.
The kind of gray line there?
The gray line, yeah. And so...
So what's the dashed line there? That's...
The dashed line is, that was actually where we were in the past.
Okay.
This line doesn't exist. Apologize for that. But this dashed line was where we were in the past. So it's an extra 12 foot seven from there.
And that was originally a flat facade that went all the way up.
Right.
So we've moved it from, the setbacks from, we were talking about the residences across the street was 127 feet, five inches, and now it's 140 feet. So we're 12 foot seven back from the furthest projection towards Xerxes. And that's where that dashed line, compared to the area that Aaron just pointed out for that first piece. It then does two setbacks, one at five feet and one at three feet, for a total of another eight feet.
So what, slow down there. So where's the five foot and where's the three foot?
Do you have it on the section?
Yeah, I mean, I like it on this, on this drawing here, if you can just even point out. It goes up two stories, then it goes back five?
This is, this is five foot, right here.
Ah, okay.
And this is three feet.
Oh, it's three feet off of that bay. And is the bay on top of the entrance into the kind of townhome-style entrance?
It depends, it depends on where you are in the elevation. In some of those areas, this will follow through, and it will be part of that recessed area horizontally to break that up. And in this instance, it will die into the top floor of that terrace area.
Got it. So is the, so the kind of darker yellow or tan, you know, brownish color in the middle section there, is that middle section further back from the left-hand section?
They're essentially flush.
Okay. It's just a change in colors, and then you use the bay?
Yep, and a slight change in, within inches to just create a little bit of a shadow line in depth between those two adjacent materials.
Okay. And then, in the five-foot setback, step-back that you have after the second floor, is that functional?
It is functional.
So that's a porch?
That's an open terrace for those third-floor units.
So the third-floor units get a porch, and so I see as it's kind of running along. Is that, so for instance, the one where you kind of had the cursor there, is that a single third-floor unit, that entire length of it? Is that their terrace?
Again, in this instance, it is.
But it wouldn't always be.
In some of them, it wouldn't always be. And one of the devices we use is an additional screening or plant barrier between those two terrace patio areas, between units.
Sure, sure. So they might be next door?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, and I understand that you came back 12 feet. So let me add it all up. From the previous, you came back...
12 feet, seven inches.
12 feet. And then this additional five and additional three.
Correct.
So some of the building is as far back as, what?
148 feet.
You mean the furthest setback portion of the building? Okay. So, one question I have is, why only five feet? Why not more?
Chairman and fellow commissioners, one of the, and I'll answer that in a second as I clarify. One of the reasons when we have to go back to the section and look at the actual dimensions, and we're kind of scrambling to see where it is, was intentional by the architect, because they wanted to create as many different facade planes as possible along Xerxes, so that there were multiple setbacks, multiple uses, there were walkout patios, there are occupied patios above those walkouts, then bays, then balconies, and then a flat facade across the top. So there's a lot of things that are happening in that element along Xerxes to really, the limitations that we had about how far we could push it back, was solved, I think, successfully by them on creating an architecture that really makes it appear as if it's a lot further back, that you can see from the renderings. And this will go back to the question that you asked. And what we were trying to do is push this back as far as possible, while still making it a viable project. We talked a little bit about this last time, and it's, sometimes it, you know, goes on blank ears because we need to do what's best for the city and what's best for the community. But this is one of the highest prices of a piece of land that's ever been purchased in Edina. And there's a certain metric that any developer that comes in here would need to hit to make it feasible. Other developers have come in here and tried to do it on their own, national, international developers that have tried to do commercial, and they couldn't make it work. And we've taken the last, over a year, on working through this to find ways that we could make this a feasible project. And the project that we showed you previously has a higher density, it has more units, it was closer to Xerxes, it worked better financially. What we did is told the architect and guided them and said, push this back as far as we possibly can, where we can still get a density that's going to make it financially viable, still get a retailer, and make it appear as if it's pushing back as far as possible.
Okay.
Chair Stoughton, I think I'm confusing everybody here a little bit. The two-story volume that comes out is actually eight feet, as indicated here. This is the line of the building right here.
So at the, so at the top of the second, after two stories, it goes back eight feet?
Correct. And then, the balcony projections that are coming back out are the five-foot portion.
All right. So hanging over that eight-foot space.
Correct. I apologize.
To the bay as well. So if you measured it to the bay, it's five feet. If you measured to the...
And I understand, and I appreciate, you know, the variety and the interest that that creates. So, let me segue then to the front of the building, or the other side of the building. I'm not sure which is the front, but the, so right there. And actually, maybe if you pull up the site, do you have the site plan?
This would probably be the...
Maybe a level, do you have a level one? There one, right there. So, so I, Mr. Shimaleski, I understand your point about, you know, needing a certain critical mass to make this thing work. But it is set back quite a ways from York. So talk to me a little bit about why the parking field in the front, and did you give some thought to, you know, pushing that retail space further up, and hence, some of the others, so that you could still push back from Xerxes, but you wouldn't lose any space at the end of the day? Tell me the thinking and the rationale behind that.
Yeah, chairman and fellow commissioners, it's a great question that we asked ourselves as well. And what we did is, we took a minimum setback from York to say, we want to get this boulevard to protect the sidewalk from there. We want to have an ample sidewalk width. We're going to do that to the greatest extent that we can, but minimize it so we aren't pushing the building back further than we need to. We have a minimum parking depth, minimum drive lane, minimum parking depth, minimum drive lane, and then brought the building as close as we could to York Avenue, to allow for a retailer of an ample size for this project to have enough parking for that area. And they also need height. So once we give the parking and the height to a retail component, which makes this project work, you have to set the building back beyond it. Otherwise, you lose the ability to have the density in the residential behind that area. So essentially, what I'm saying is, we pushed it as far towards York as we could.
So what you're saying is, you need a parking field directly in front of the retail?
And we've looked at, yes. And we've looked at the option of turning it at 90 degrees, and also pushing it forward and putting the parking behind it.
Right.
And it didn't work.
So why didn't that work?
Two reasons. One, when we flipped it to the side, the way the traffic worked, we couldn't get enough parking spaces, because you were limited on traffic.
And I think that might look a little goofy, too, from the street.
Yeah. And when we pushed it all the way forward, it added a lot to the gross area.
And came around behind it?
Came around behind it.
Or under it, or somewhere?
Yeah. And then you would tower over it. It made it a very expensive building, didn't look as nice. And it also added a lot to the gross square feet. So our density was larger.
Okay. So, and then one more question I'll let others ask. Grade-wise, are those parking spaces flush with the sidewalk and the grade of York? Or is that down below or above? What's the, what would that look like? Do you understand the question I'm asking?
I think so. For the parking in front of the retail?
Correct.
It's essentially the same. I believe there's a small upgrade to there. I don't know if it's shown in the section.
Basically flush.
Yeah.
Basically, it's flush through here. We're picking up a lot of that grade elevation, because there is a difference between Xerxes and York. And that difference is picked up in these areas here alongside the building.
So, I mean, just to jump to the...
So this is relatively flat.
Right. So, did you give any thought to sinking that in an effort to make the streetscape view from York maybe look more, more like the retail was closer?
We talked about that. We talked about sinking that parking in the beginning, and it had a lot of pushback from general contractors about the amount of excavation that's already being taken out. Once you push it down even further, when you drive by York, they had problems with retailers that are going to be down, because you'd drive in...
Oh, I see.
And drive down to that area. And then you had watershed issues, and it brought up a lot. But we did, we did look at that.
Okay. Other questions? Commissioner Olson?
Just kind of following up. I kind of agree that just additional setback from Xerxes would have been nice to see. I know you already gave some, but, or even, you know, pulling it back further, or, again, I'm just completely thinking out of the box, but is there a way to reduce the height on there, just to be, you know, to consider what Richfield is, you know, some of their comments, four stories, and to keep at that, and just to kind of, is there any, have you, I mean, again, I kind of, what you said, pushing it closer to York, if it's potentially possible to do that. I still think that you're really kind of right up there on them. I really like what you've done, you know, with setting it back, but I just think you could do it more. Or could you even reduce some of the height on that and make up some of that height towards York? You know, I don't know if you could even do that possibly with the building, if the city would accept it, but...
Sure.
I think just we need to be a little bit more, you know, reflective of what Richfield and their concerns are, and what, you know, even though they're going to go to multifamily, it's still going to be max four stories, and they're concerned about the six stories. And I think we need to be conscious of that, so.
Chair Stoughton and Commissioner Olson, one of the things that, one building that I'm really proud of that is, that we did on Grand Avenue, was Oxford Hills. It's the development that has a CVS in the ground floor and some sports stores. This is the same type of setback principle that we used in that, in that development. And in mixed use, one of the biggest challenges of doing setbacks like this is, we're always told from the contractors and developers that we have to have our units stacked, and that plumbing cores need to go all the way through, and that they don't like transitions, and that ultimately creates lots of big dollar figures for these types of developments. So what this does is actually make much larger units along these first and second-floor units. And as we go up, those kitchen plumbing lines and bathroom plumbing lines are stacked with the units above. And so, it creates kind of a very major Rubik's Cube with, do you have enough living room space in these units that don't have those projections? Are your bedrooms too big? And so, it's, there's a lot that went into the thinking of how we could make this economically viable, but also create as much interest and setback as possible without driving that podium expression. It's easier on the York side because of the retail. And obviously, retail wouldn't, we wouldn't want retail on the Xerxes side. So that's what drove it architecturally in many of our discussions, is that stacking element of the design.
Commissioner Olson, I think it's a, it's a great concern, and that's what we had in mind when we did make the changes. And if you can go back to the original one, I just want to show the dramatic change that's happened from this original design. And we're 148 feet away from the closest facade of the next home. And I think, no matter what is presented by whatever developer on this site, it's always going to, it would be nice if there were a bit more, a bit pushback. And what we did is guided the architects and said, we need to push it back as far as we can, where we can still maintain this minimum amount of units, and we've reduced it from 273 to 242, brought the building down, and pushed everything back to what we think is basically as far as we can possibly go, while still maintaining the viability of the project. And, yeah, I would argue that, you know, ESG has done a tremendous job of changing that entire base. We have complete brick base that mimics the homes across the side. And, you know, I won't belabor on it, what they've done. But I think that, you know, we've, we've pushed it as far as we think we can possibly go. And we've done all the shadow studies, we've done the traffic studies that go past there, we've done the renderings where we're driving down the street to look at it. And essentially, the important part, in my opinion, is that if, we can move it back a few feet, but are you going to notice that when you're driving down the street? To me, it was more, if you're driving down the street, what can we do? To me, it was more, if you're driving down the street, what can we do to this building? To move it back as far as we can, and once we do, make it really part of that community and use the right materials and right methods. And I think, you know, that's what we guided ESG to do and I'm, I'm really happy with what they've, uh, what they've come back with.
Commissioner Lee.
Um, I have a question about the site plan, um, you had shown on eight point zero one. What, do you have the dimensions of that green space that you said now grew as a result of the property line bumping back a little bit? At upper north-east gap up there, what are the dimensions of that?
Commissioners, uh, Stone and Chair Stone and Commissioner Lee, that you're, you're talking about the dimension from the face of the building to the property?
No, 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 the green space.
The green space here?
Yep, yep.
Um, I don't have that offhand. Any of my team members? I apologize, um, we can certainly give you that dimension. It's an extensive piece of land, essentially the, the house overlapped this area, which was one of the reasons amongst many that Peter had to buy it, uh, or, uh, put a purchase agreement on it. Um, but, uh, I don't, I don't know the dimension offhand, I apologize. Quarter of an acre?
A little bit more.
What was that, how much?
Probably about a third of an acre.
Okay.
Including there's a dead-end street there, um, so I think that's overlapping with the sidewalk. But I believe that property is about zero point three acres.
Okay, so about a third of an acre. What, go ahead, Commissioner Lee.
Uh, well, the second question was, did you, uh, just talking a little bit about sort of the expected tenants, uh, what, I think you kind of alluded to that, or somebody did about that in some ways, these tenants were a little bit different, a little more upscale? Or, uh, do you see them as being primarily, um, supported by the residents? Are they going to be geared towards the residents or not necessarily? I'm just kind of considering it in terms of the existing retail space that we already have in that area and how it might or might not choose to relate or differ.
Commissioner Lee, uh, can I ask you to, um, clarify the question? Are you asking about the, the retail space?
Yes.
Sure. Um, the retail space, right now, we've, um, hired a brokerage, a local brokerage company here that's working with several different local and national tenants that are interested in the area. The intent is to do something that is an amenity for the City of Edina and an amenity for our residents. I can't say that it would be specific to the demographic of our residents by themselves because it applies to so many different, uh, levels of, um, uh, individuals that might be in our space. Um, but we're looking at a high-end restaurant for the larger space. We bifurcated the twelve-thousand-five-hundred square feet into two different spaces. So one is a larger, what we hope to be a high-end restaurant and the other can be a supportive, maybe a, um, a more of a daytime breakfast, coffee, uh, if it is food service or like Aaron alluded to, a yoga studio or something, um, something that doesn't compete with the, uh, the restaurant that might already be in place.
So, not, not specific to the demographic, but it certainly has to be complimentary.
Okay, uh, could I just see that elevation again on that side of the retail?
We have this view, which highlights the residential entrance as well. And then this view, which is the primary, uh, retail frontage.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there a, um, proposed use for the green space in the northeast corner that Commissioner Lee was asking about?
Um, Chairman, thank you for the question. It, at this point, no, we're trying to keep it as open and up to the residents as possible. One of the reasons for that is we didn't want the residents of our development to feel ownership over that area. Even though it's part of our property, we'd rather maintain it as more of a public feel, open grass area. Residents of Richfield, people walking down Xerxes, everybody would feel welcome to go into that area.
Okay. Other questions? Commissioner Olson.
Quick one, um, part of this getting the higher, um, the height and is a condition of sustainability? And have you guys, you know, given that thought, what you would do kind of above and beyond to as far as sustainable guidelines or? I know it's still kind of early in the process, but if you've...
Chair Stone and Commissioner Olson, uh, we have thought a lot about it. Um, in, in my previous remarks when we talked, um, ESG, we, we, our base specifications are green, inherently green. Um, we've done that over the last several years and so unless a developer asks us to change those, um, which they haven't, uh, there's a, a base portion of a lot of things that go into the building that, um, are very important to us as, as a, as a firm. Anything from sealants to carpets to paints, et cetera. Um, one of the major sustainable, um, features of this site, we believe, is the, the location. Um, on weekends, this site has an amazing opportunity for residents to participate in many different events and retail activity without using their car. So site selection, I think, is a huge portion of this. Um, and the walkability of it, uh, in terms of, uh, all of the types of connections we're trying to integrate into the larger neighborhood, um, and the respite spots along the way. So they aren't just trivial sidewalks, they're, they're active and, and enhanced and, and fun to be interacting with. The other is, um, as I pointed out, in both of those courtyards, there, we're, we're looking at a substantial amount of green roof. Um, so many of those conversations are evolving, uh, but at the next hearing, we'll, we'll be able to share, hopefully even more of those things we're looking at.
And Commissioner Olson, if I may add, um, you, you had mentioned it's, uh, you know, early in the process, I think what's great about ESG is day one, that's what they're thinking about, that's their starting point. And us as a developer, that's where we need our starting point to be. Especially as I alluded to before, being a long-term holder and operator of this building, using efficient mechanical systems and limiting water usage. All those things help our bottom line as well as help the environment. So it's something that we strive for, uh, on multiple ends. The other thing I want to note, if you go to the amenity plan, is we are exploring at this point, we're still trying to figure out the viability is, uh, shared garden spaces within the quiet courtyard. Um, so these would be planting areas that the residents would be able to come down, use, um, use them as their personal garden areas, kind of a communal garden area. So, we're, uh, we're still exploring the, uh, the options, we're pushing for that.
Great, thank you.
Commissioner Carr.
Oh, just two more questions and that is, uh, since I'm on the Living Streets Advisory Group and we're interested in pedestrian-friendly and bicycle-friendly. I didn't see anything in your plans about bicyclists or bicycle racks, I don't know if you've considered that?
We, we have, uh, Commissioner Carr, we've definitely considered it. We will have ample bike storage in here to fit the needs of the residences. I, is it, there's a couple of areas though. Uh, we have one bike room here, um, and as the plan evolves, my point is, I, we're going to have them located throughout the basements, the, the underground parking as well. Um, typically, we provide, uh, uh, one bike stall per bedroom, so.
Okay, and I was also interested in bicycle racks perhaps for public, people coming in to use the restaurants, um, whatever else you have there.
Absolutely.
I would just ask you to consider that because again, we're trying to create pedestrian-friendly areas. Um, and then one other thing, it would be, um, public art, have you considered putting any art at the front of the building? Um, just a suggestion, it might make it interesting.
Uh, Commissioner Carr, we, we have not designated that, uh, yet, but I think that's something that we can certainly explore.
All right, thank you.
Commissioner Platter.
I have got kind of one larger comment and then a couple very specific, or smaller, specific ones. So can you go back to the level above this or go back? So right there, and maybe you've considered it, but I was just looking at the, as you look at the elevations both from Xerxes and from York, you know, York is almost, uh, a smaller-looking elevation from the street because you've got that wide-open space with the pool in between the, the two tower elements. And, you know, is there any way for the, the courtyard to do that on the, the east side of the, the building? You know, obviously that'd be a little more laying out than, you know, maybe your son, maybe you looked at that, but you know, to, to break up the facade on the, on the east side, you know, essentially flip that courtyard ninety degrees and ring it from the other sides and not necessarily, um, or you, use, use the best of your, um, breaking up spaces to be facing the public areas versus the, the south side here, which I'm not sure what's there, but I don't think it's residential or anything. That's kind of a broad question and I know you've done a lot of work on that side, which we certainly appreciate and you did take a lot of our comments into effect, but it was just, I was strike, it was striking to me as you looked at one side versus the other side and you had that opening in there. Is there any opportunity for that on, on the, on the east side? And I don't know what that does to your, I'm assuming you can still can stack your apartments, it might be a different configuration, of course.
Um, Commissioner Platter, um, that, I think I understand what you're saying in that the courtyard would open up towards Xerxes.
Correct.
Um, it's, it's something we didn't go in-depth on exploring. When we did do the massing layouts, we couldn't get the density without wrapping the corner. And what happened is we created too many corners in the building. Once you start, corners for buildings are, are the most inefficient piece of the building.
Yeah, yeah, right, I agree.
Um, and we couldn't get the amount of stairways, elevator ring and movement through the building with that configuration because we had looked at an H turned on its side and that's how this one started. And the only way we could get the density that we needed was by flipping it.
Commissioner, one other thing was just complete solar access, not only to these courtyards, but as much as possible into the units. And so, the, uh, the disadvantage of the previous scheme is that it ended up being a C shape, so there was returns on the inside, which kind of limited the southern, the sun exposure to a lot of those, those units that faced the courtyard. We're hoping that through our shadow studies, they've proven to us that this allows us sort of maximum sunlight for as many units as we possibly can on that southern, on that southern face.
Okay, I, you know, I mean, just may want to look at a little bit more and then I had a couple other comments to this. And, uh, I like the renderings, I like the overall, but as, you know, I just want to make sure that it doesn't come back with a bunch of, uh, mechanical rooftops on it and other spots, like tends to happen along the way. Um, I was just to comment on the northeast corner, that park, you know, is it, is it almost a, a pocket park, if you will? Not exactly, but is that kind of what your intent is, is it's a, it's a green space for all there?
Yes.
And then, do you allow pets in here?
Pardon me?
Do you allow pets?
Yes, we do.
Do you have specific dog walking areas or anything? Have you thought of, you know, it's, again, it's a detail, but, you know, that, what, what amenities may go with that? And are, are there certain areas that are better here than other areas?
Yeah, Commissioner Platter, we, uh, actually have a dog wash in the building as well, uh, just off the elevator core, uh, at the ground floor.
Dog spa.
Dog spa, sorry, dog spa, sorry to your dogs. Um, and the, uh, the way ESG has designed the sidewalks is that you can, um, circle the outside of our entire site without crossing any main traffic areas. Um, so you should be able to just walk outside, walk around the side of the building, um, and have an ample area, uh, within the area.
We haven't specifically designed a, a dog off-leash area. Um, that's, that's often controversial depending on where we put it and so...
That's what I was kind of getting at and what...
It's, it would be a leashed dog concept.
Okay. And then again, the minor thing where you're, where you're talking on the, on the bottom of this picture where you're, where you're, the loading areas, uh, you know, I would suggest you just, those look like paper parks there anyway. I would just suggest you stripe them off and, you know, for a turnaround versus, no one's going around out there every time with a cone. So, I, just my two cents and...
Our management team would agree with you.
Yeah, so, just, just to be...
And, and Commissioner Platter, one of the things that we've looked at too is that, um, the move-in would certainly be in that area, but what we'd like to do is minimize how far the trash, um, would need to come into the building, the trash trucks. There's a chance that they would be in this area here.
Sure.
And the trash would come through the garage so they would roll it out to the truck so we can minimize how far they're coming into the site.
Because you're going to have to deal with retail trash, I guess, I don't know where you have it either, but...
Yeah, and that's right next to the retail area right there, so they'd stop and probably do both.
I think that was it for comments, the last one I had was just on the affordable housing piece and, and, uh, I don't know about fellow commissioners, but I would certainly like to see, you know, that ten percent range is denoted for that. And I don't know if, uh, I don't know if, it didn't look like anything was there right now, but that would certainly be a, a question going forth with us and, and also with the city council on, on what you're proposing for that.
Sure.
I, I like, I do like that you listened to a lot of our comments from before and I think it's a, it's a better project because of that. Thanks.
We agree, thank you.
Commissioner Schroder.
Mr. Chair, um, I have questions about the parking ratios related to retail. Can you tell me what ratio generally you're targeting to support the retail you're anticipating?
Uh, Commissioner Schroder, um, I don't know if you know the answer offhand. When we worked with our broker and, uh, they're the ones who are giving us some of those ratios, telling us what the uses are, the square footage is, and then the ratio of the square footage per, um, stall, uh, square footage of the retail per stall. Um, and we've met the requirements now that we've, uh, shrunk the retail. So at twenty-two thousand square feet, when we used to have the, um, grocer there, we're very tight. It was to the point where we didn't have much for visitors or incoming residents, uh, or employees. And now that that's shrunk down, um, we have, uh, we have parking that will meet those needs, uh, as well as visitor parking. Um, but I apologize, I do not know the ratio that was used for the parking spot.
Well, so just some quick calculations, there's twelve-thousand-five-hundred square feet of retail in this project. There's a hundred and thirty-four surface parking spaces, some of those guest parking, the rest being serving the retail. You're probably in the ratio of at least eight and probably ten spaces per thousand, which seems high to me. And it seems particularly high when you start looking at how the parking is configured on the west side of the building, relative to trying to create spaces on the rest of it. If you go back to the site plan, what we end up with, you, you, you've talked about trying to create a more comfortable walking environment along York Avenue by pulling the sidewalk away from the curb, which I appreciate, but you put it right up against a parking lot. Um, so now somebody's, instead of walking along with cars on one side, they're walking along with cars on the other side. And, and there's an advantage to moving away from the, the speed of traffic on York, but it's no more pleasant to walk along York Avenue when you're walking past parked cars. And so what you have there is forty-eight parking spaces in a single, you know, in a double-loaded bay and then another twenty-four parking spaces with a drive aisle going in front. And it would seem as we try and do things on the site, it's those twenty-four extra parking spaces. And I'm saying extra because I'm, I'm not sure that you need ten spaces per thousand to support the retail. I don't know that we have ten spaces per thousand anywhere in Edina to support retail, I could be wrong on that. But it seems by eliminating that drive aisle and eliminate, eliminating those twenty-four spaces, we gain the space we need to have at York Avenue. And then if you look at the other side of the site, you have nearly sixty feet between the curb and the primary building facade with essentially nothing going on. Sixty feet is a significant amount of space in an urban environment and you've landscaped it with a sidewalk going through. And it's not really creating anything of value for anybody on that side except for separation and you actually describe it as a setback. I think when we look at how we develop sites in a PUD, we're trying to create spaces and too often we see proposals come forward where the spaces around the outside are identified as setbacks and left as setback and actually, instead of actually being developed as something. And when I look at a space that's sixty feet deep across the street and granted, part of it's in the right-of-way, it should be considered as an experience on the site and not just a setback. So I think when you, when I start to look at this, looking at how parking works on the west side of the building and looking at how much space we have on the east side of the building, it seems we should be trying to pull this building a little further away so that we get a more pleasant experience on York Avenue and a parking ratio which would seem to be more appropriate for, um, for a twelve-thousand square, a parking field that seems more appropriate for a twelve-thousand-square-foot, um, retail use. And taking, so we get some of that space along York Avenue where we really want to have a, a more significant, uh, buffer to both the parking and the street and take the rest of it and put it along York, along Xerxes and actually make something of the space instead of just thinking about it as setback.
Commissioner Schroder, I, I think those are tremendous ideas. I, I'm, I'm following you on, on both ends of the building. Um, one of the, and I think it's something that we will certainly look into, especially the use of this space or the setback that we're calling it along Xerxes and what those uses can be. Um, and describe that a little bit more and Aaron can maybe go into it. But it's supposed to, to be that buffer, but also a yard space and a green space and sidewalk space. But I think if there's more undulations or more things happening there, it certainly could help it. On the retail side, um, we're not retail experts, but we go, we, we partner with the experts to make sure that we're planning appropriately for this. And regardless of the size, the brokers have told us, if you have a restaurant, you need a hundred spaces. Otherwise, you're going to lose out on seventy percent of your potential tenants because they don't think that they can... think that they can park it. And right now, with incoming tenants, visitors, and employees, we're down to about 100 spaces. I don't think it's out of the realm of possibility that the things you're suggesting, that we can look at and see if there's certain things that we can push back, especially if we're limited to maybe even doing it at the center, where we create a larger node, and a larger green space, and get rid of some of that parking, and make a larger congregation area, but still keeping some of the parking on the side, I think are certainly viable options. But we have been pushed, on the other side, on making it certain that we have enough parking, otherwise, you know, we're going to have an empty retail.
Further questions? All right. So, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing, so I'd like to take the time at this point to open the public hearing, and invite folks to come up and share their thoughts on this. We have two side podiums. I would recommend you use one of the side podiums, unless you've got something to show us on the overhead. Please introduce yourself with your name and address. And then there are lights on the podium that will help you understand how much time you have left. The green is go, the yellow is you're almost out of time, and the red is you're out of time. So, welcome.
Thank you. My name is Debbie Guttell. I live at 6525 James Avenue South in Richfield. I'm the mayor of the city of Richfield, and also a resident on the west side. And I want to thank you for being so considerate, Anne Lanier, and the architects, for being so considerate of your neighbors, and we appreciate that. We've worked together on projects, the T. Miller project, and some of that went better than it could have, and some could be better. I'm here again to say that we need to look at this again, and I wanted to make a quick point of clarification. When they look at the land use guide for, to mid-density, the medium density on the Richfield side, that is for planning purposes for the Met Council. Many of us do that. There is no intention of that being medium density ever, and in fact, it's not financially feasible. And I'm sure our staff has shared that with you. So that is a residential area. We would like it treated as an Edina residential area. We are your neighbors, and I know that you care about us. And it's a moral imperative that people get the idea that they do not have a wall up in front of them on those houses, and that they can see the sky, and that they can see the sun. And even with the setbacks, they will not have that in many of those houses in Richfield. They are the smaller Cape Cod's. And to that, since I only have three minutes, I want to go quickly through our list, and this is in a letter format that is sent to your city hall. You'll get a copy of that. At first, that green space was listed as a dog park. It appears that's not the case. We would not prefer a dog park there. The architectural context, the project will face a block of one-story-and-a-half Cape Cod's and single-family ramblers. The proposed design is not context-sensitive, in the period and the style to which we are in this neighborhood. It really changes the flavor of the neighborhood. There's extensive shadow impacts. The impacts would be lessened and possibly eliminated by reducing the building's height, the four stories, and increasing the building's setback from Xerxes, which is part of your planning and zoning currently. The building's setback is less than 132 feet from existing single-family homes. Proposed setback is significantly less than the Edina requires for PCD-3 district and are planned resident PRD projects, when adjacent to R1 single-family dwellings, which you are in that instance. The height is in excess of four to five stories. The existing commercial site is guided for community activity center in Edina's comprehensive plan. The maximum height in the area is 44 stories, or 48 feet. The maximum height allowed in the single-dwelling unit district is two and a half stories. The proposed six-story building exceeds these allowances, and exceeds the Richfield comprehensive plan anticipated for this site. So we do take exception to the sunlight. I mean, I understand that the building needs sunlight as well, and you'll have sunlight from the south side for your residents, but please remember that Richfield deserves sunlight as well. So I ask you to take that into consideration. The setback does not take away from the height of the building. It still is six stories looking out of your front window. And we have that problem now with the T. Miller site, Tom Miller site, that is up there, that people are bothered consistently by headlights and stuff because of that configuration. Although, we were able to work out so many really great things, I still think we could do better. And I have no qualms about that, because Richfield has made mistakes in some of the redevelopment as well, in our own, about parking and things. This is so hard to do. This is so hard to do. We're redeveloping first and second-ring suburbs, and we're trying to squeeze things into sites that have a lot of complicated pieces to them, and I totally understand that. But this is a soft border. This is not a hard border. And we both need to be thinking about each other as neighbors. And I would hope that we could go back. One of our conversations with city staff, and the mayor, and the city manager, is trying to stack some of the density on top of the retail, so that you can still keep the density, so that the project is viable. We believe in density, too, but that we get that six stories off, and get it down to four stories on the Richfield side. Whatever you can do, we would really appreciate it. In the spirit of cooperation, I'm available to talk to any of you and answer questions.
Thank you, Mayor Guttell. And we did, in fact, get a copy of your letter, so thank you for sending it.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Appreciate you coming tonight.
I know there's a few Richfield residents here, too. I'd like to say a few words, so...
Look forward to hearing from them.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments?
Good evening. My name is Todor Bryanov, and I live on 6616 Xerxes Avenue South, which is about three houses away from the proposed building. I do have some concerns regarding the traffic that's going to most likely increase on Xerxes, in my opinion, due to some of the limitations for left turns on York. People possibly not turning, making a U-turn on York to go south will most likely use the Xerxes Street, and also the residents that will be living on the Xerxes side of the house, or of the building, and will have access to that street. Is there any plan on having non-parking spaces in front of the building, or will there be cars parked? Because currently, there are not, I believe, any cars allowed to park there, but still there are. And also, I'm not really sure what the plans for the houses, the four houses, that are going to be left on Xerxes, on the Edina side. What's going to happen to those with this new development?
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Yeah, and what we're going to do is, once we close the public hearing, we're going to follow up. So I've been trying to keep notes of the questions that are getting asked, and we'll follow up on that.
Good evening. My name's Dennis Fink. I own 6713 Xerxes, and my nieces live in there. We've owned that for many years. My mother lived there and died there, and so we've been very familiar with that neighborhood. And I am a little concerned about, as our mayor, and I appreciate her coming forward and helping us on this, the height of the building, I believe, is too many stories, basically. We are going to have an impact of shadow, whether they believe it or not. First of all, we're not going to be seeing very much of the sky anymore, if it goes as is. Also, it, I've lived in this city for many, many years, and for all my life, and this is, this building looks quite a bit like South Minneapolis across the street. The dark brick building, one big wall, reminds me of many areas of South Minneapolis that seem a little on the dingy side to me. The building is not aesthetically, I believe it doesn't appear very aesthetically sufficient for a suburban, or not suburban, but for an area such as this. And I don't know, for Edina, I would think it would be, you would want maybe a little more aesthetically-looking building. But also, that is our major concerns. We would like to see, if possible, that the building is lower, maybe by two stories, preferably, and that the concerns of the parking, I've seen the traffic in our area there, and watched it for many years, and I do not believe this is going to be as low an impact as is thought by many of the people that are planning this building. And so, that is my concern, and I would like to have those looked at, possibly, a little harder before you make a decision on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fink. Other comments? Welcome.
Hello. My name is Linda Schnitzon. I live at 6717 Xerxes, so I will be directly across the street from the proposed apartment building. And I do appreciate that you have tried to address some of the concerns of Richfield, but as our mayor stated, there, you know, there's been a lot of emphasis on the fact that this was, this is planned to be medium density at some point on the Richfield side, and as our mayor has said, that is not likely to happen. So, we're going to be living with this building across the street for a long time, and it just, to me, it just does not fit with the character of a residential neighborhood. And I'm concerned if whether, you know, what's going to happen to my home value? Am I going to be able to sell my house if I want to, a few years down the road? Is, you know, am I going to be able to get what I would expect to get for it? I just, I really hope that you will consider what you would do if this was Edina property on the other side of the street. Would you still be putting in a six-story building, and, you know, asking for variances on the setback and so forth? And what would those residents, you know, what kind of protests would you get from those Edina residences, residents if you were doing this in their neighborhood? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schnitzon.
My name is Nancy Barr, and I live at 6620 Xerxes. And after all this construction is done, there's only going to be like four houses on the west side of Xerxes. I'm wondering how that's going to impact the value of our houses. Also, what type of division is going to go between the apartment and the house that sits next to it? I'm not that house. I'm the next one over, but I'm sure my neighbor would be interested in knowing whether it's going to be a fence, or... Our property elevation is higher than the apartment building right now, so I guess I was just, that was a question I had. And one good point, there's going to be a walkway through by the apartment building, which means maybe people won't be running through my yard to get to McDonald's. Thank you.
So, Ms. Barr, I just want to be clear, you're on the west side of Xerxes?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you both. Oh, sure, come on back up.
Just to add to the walkways, I'm not sure that I'm...
Do you have people going through to McDonald's?
No, I have not. But I think I felt some of the efforts that Nancy's put in to stop those guys, but the walkways or the sidewalks that we have around that building, I'm not sure I understand how they're going to fit with the street view on the west side of Xerxes, because they don't seem to go anywhere south and north on that street. It appears that they're confined to the apartment complex itself only. Also, I'm not sure what kind of residence you would expect to use those facilities, and how they would be used to get to Southdale, if, because I thought I heard that being mentioned, that that's going to provide access to Southdale. I don't see that happening, because there's no crosswalks on York. So, it kind of looks like a little bit disconnected.
So if you were to walk today to try to go over to Southdale, how would you do it?
I would either go down to Cup Foods and use the traffic light, or I would use...
Go down to Xerxes and then through there?
Right, and then, and then up north to 66, and cross that way. Maybe a traffic light for a left turn on York towards the building would help, and maybe that would also provide access to the south of York, which would hopefully eliminate traffic on Xerxes, some of the solutions that may be put in place.
Okay.
And that would actually allow people to cross York and get into the Southdale Mall and Galleria further down south, or whatever you have there.
Sure. It's a good question.
Yep.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Since the area is getting more commercialized, I'm wondering if there's any thought to what might happen to our four houses? Will there be more commercial properties built there? Only because there's, you know, there's going to be expenses that I have to spend, well, I have to spend, I have to spend money on improvements to my house, and if I know that it's going to be taken away in a couple of years, I think that would make a difference in how I felt about the improvements. Just a thought.
It's a good question. I think others have asked. I can't tell you, I don't, I'm not aware of anybody having any plans to take your house, so...
Well, they can have it.
All right, so we got a real estate brokering going on. Thank you, Ms. Schnitzon.
Do you want another apartment building?
All right. Last call. Any other, any other comments during the public hearing portion of the meeting? Good comments. I appreciate you all coming forward and sharing them. All right. Now seeing further comments, I take a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
And is there a second?
Second.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right. So the public hearing is closed. I want to thank you again for those comments. We appreciate those. Before we go into discussion, I would like to try and answer some of the questions. Mr. Rickert, traffic, there was traffic discussions. If you could kind of come forward, there was questions about what we anticipate in terms of traffic on Xerxes as a result of this. I know there was some questions earlier about, you know, we just had a discussion about kind of the pedestrian crossing and the left turn off of Xerxes. Can you kind of walk through, one, why are you recommending a left turn off of Xerxes? Two, would it be signalized? And then, three, what do we know about traffic on Xerxes from the work that you've done? And then, at four, I think somebody mentioned a question about parking on Xerxes, whether there is no parking, what's the status now, and do we have any recommendations for the future?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, as far as the left turn in, we looked at two different alternatives here. We looked at no access, basically what it is today, two right-in, right-out, you know, accesses. You know, obviously, it worked fine, you know, those intersections worked fine. The intersections of 66th and York, and 69th in York worked fine also within those scenarios. However, you know, there are concerns with U-turns and safety of vehicles making those U-turns. The higher volume that was looked at was the left turn in. There's enough of a median there to provide for a 100-plus-foot, 110-foot approximately storage in a left turn lane, so there is enough room to provide that left turn in. And there's enough room to provide another pork chop-type median in the middle to preclude the left turn out from the site. Now, the left turn out from the site would be the one that would, you know, typically cause more, you know, more issues, you know, people pulling out in front of people, you know, those types of things. So those, that left turn out tends to have a little bit more, more issues with that. And it's a smaller volume, you know, that left turn to go south, more people are wanting to go north and disperse that way. So, we, with the new access, or the new access configuration, we did not look at any traffic on Xerxes. We assumed that there would not be any new traffic from this site that would be on Xerxes. You know, parking...
Why did you make that assumption?
We made that assumption because there would be no, one, there'd be no access on Xerxes. The, anybody that would want to go south would tend... Xerxes. The, anybody that would want to go south would tend to want to go, you know, to France Avenue versus, you know, turning and then coming down Xerxes to go south and then dispersing through neighborhoods versus going to a, more of a major-type street, you know, to, to go south. So, you know, we made that assumption. If they are going to go, you know, back south, you know, and they would go turn right at 66th Street, they would tend to go to Penn or go to another more major street to go south versus, you know, through neighborhoods. So, we made that assumption that no additional traffic would go through there. And if there is some, it would be very minor, it'd be a very low number of vehicles that would make that movement through the neighborhood. As far as the parking, we made an assumption, again, that there would be no parking along there. I believe that's what is there today, or if there is parking, you know, it's, the street is too narrow to allow, and I guess I'm not 100% sure what that parking would be. There's plenty of parking within the site to accommodate those, those units on that side, so we made that assumption that there'd be no parking on that side. Again, if there would be, there'd be a very small number, you know, as far as those units that have direct access to Xerxes. It wouldn't be a very large number from, you know, fairly similar to what's there today, you know, if there would be parking out there today. So, posting no parking may be an option, you know, if, if it's not already posted. I guess I'm not 100% sure if it's posted or not. As far as this traffic signal at, you know, at that left turn, that's probably going to be, it's, one, it's not going to meet any traffic signal warrants. The traffic volumes that would come in and out of this site are, are too low. It, it is across from the Southdale Access, the left turn into Southdale, so it, it is across from that. But again, there's no outbound movement from Southdale at that driveway, so there's not enough traffic, you know, generated through that intersection to justify a traffic signal. So, the county, the county has a prioritization system where they look at for traffic signals, which, you know, includes traffic volumes, crashes at the intersection, you know, and those types of items that prioritize signals if they're justified or not. You know, my, I, I would, I would put a lot of money on that this intersection would not, although we haven't looked at it, it would not meet any of those prioritization criteria, so...
And so then that would preclude pedestrian crossing at that?
At that location. You know, again, pedestrian crossings at the signals would be the, where people would be, you know, pointed to, you know, 69th and 66th, you know, would be those two intersections that they would be pushed to.
And is there a pedestrian, there isn't a pedestrian crossing at the north, at the north side of the, right at the Cub, is there?
There is one there at Cub, I'm sorry, there, there is a Cub across in there, I believe, so...
Okay.
And...
Which will be the north end of the new apartment building?
Exactly, that's what I was just going to indicate that. They made that connection across there with that new Cub Foods, or with the new apartments in Southdale. So, did I hit everything that you asked? I'm sorry.
I think you did. Thank you. Any, any other questions for Mr. Rickert while I've got him up here?
Just a comment that, you know, one of the, as a PUD, and we all keep focusing that there's transit across the street, and, you know, there's also additional parking over there if you need it for the restaurant and such, but there's going to be a, a desire to cross there and not everyone to walk down to the signal. And I, I, there's a whole larger, you know, city v. Edina issue, but I don't know if we've looked at that or what, you know, or do we want to prevent it completely? Like Bloomington and Mall of America, they're putting up fences so people don't cross, but I think there might be a, a poll, having the residents living there and shopping across the street and, and not walking the two blocks down to the street. But it's, it's just, so it's just a comment, it's not necessarily tied to this, but...
And that's a discussion that we had with respect to that apartment building across the street in reverse, saying, well, how are folks from there going to get over to Cub and to, you know, the pharmacies and the liquor store and the other kind of retail outlets there along that mall? So, I think it's a good point. Okay, thank you, Mr. Rickert. One of the issues that came up was the whole sunlight issue. I wonder, Mr. Shimaleski, Mr. Ross, we didn't talk about it during your presentation, but did, I understand you did some sunlight studies. Can you come up and, I don't know if you have any graphics, there were some in the materials that were printed. I don't know if you have anything more than that. But I'd like to hear you just talk about what you learned when you did that study and what the results were.
Chairman and fellow commissioners would be happy to go through that. We did do some studies. And first off, Ms. Barr, I've told Aaron 100 times not to cut through your yard to go to McDonald's, but he just won't listen. The, but really thank you to Mayor Gotel and Ms. Schnitzon, Ms. Barr, Mr. Fink, and from 6616, I didn't get your name, I apologize. Briump.
Briump.
Pleasure. But it's, it's, I went to school here, I went to architecture school at the U, I was up here for two years, now I'm in Chicago, and it's nice to be back in Minnesota. Nice, it's nice to see cities that are, are working together, and I want to give the commission and council credit for, for really pushing us last time to get to the point that we are today. And as a developer, like I said, we're, we're here long-term, we're going to manage the building, and, and this is something that we want to be part of, both of these communities. And there's, not everyone's going to be happy with the development that, that you come up with. Essentially, there are going to be people who, who oppose it. What we're trying to do is do the best job that we possibly can to keep this a viable project, because I think this redevelopment has a lot of opportunity for both cities, and jobs, and tax dollars, and redevelopment to this area that I think is really in need of it. But also be sensitive to the, the issues at hand. And we're, we're trying to do the best that we can to make sure that there's a balance between there. And, and there is a limit to how far we can go, to the point where it's no longer viable, and we're, we're sensitive to that. These concerns are things that we took last time, and we go through and we watch the video, and we look at all the concerns, and we go through step by step. And, and we, we take them all very seriously and pull back as much as we can, and we'll do that again with these. One of the, and I won't, certainly I won't answer all of your questions, but I'll try to, and one, with, with your permission, with the shadow study, what the architect had done is, if you look, this is March and September morning, 9:00 AM, so across this top bar...
Can you just orient us on each one of these?
Yeah, these are all, this is nine of the same pictures. It's an overhead view. This is the mall area, our development site, and then Richfield, so here's Xerxes, and here's York Avenue. So, every picture is the same, and it's giving you different times of day. So, across the top, this is 9:00 AM, this is noon, this is 3:00 PM, this is March, September in this column, June, and December. Obviously, in December in the evening is going to be the worst-case scenario. So, what we did is we looked at a shadow study to see what that impact would be. Obviously, December 9:00 AM in the morning is when the sun is first rising, so everything is casting a large shadow. You can see even these single or, or one-and-a-half-story homes are almost double their size in the shadow, as is our development. What we wanted to explore further is, what is the worst-case scenario? We didn't want to mislead anyone or mislead ourselves on what the shadow study meant. But if you look over here at December at 3:00 PM, you can see that the homes along Richfield, along Xerxes are in, in the shadows. Nowhere else on here are they shown in the shadows. So, what we did is we dove deeper, and we said, let's take the worst-case scenario, let's go in December, let's go in the long, the shortest day, December 20th. There's eight hours and 40 minutes of sunlight. Only in the last two hours of sunlight are the houses shaded, from 2:30 to 4:30 PM. And what we found is, the Cub Foods next door, which is only the equivalent of what two-story residential building would be, only gives an hour and a half of shadow. So, we're comparing two hours to an hour and a half on the worst-case scenario that would ever shadow those houses. So, even that, that two-story building is only a half hour less than ours. So, the reduction in height, I, I can see from trying to make that perspective further back, but from a shadow study really does not have much of an impact if, if at all. And this was to convince ourselves at the same time. We wanted to make sure that we knew what that, what that impact was. With your permission, Chair, I just wanted to answer a few more of the questions that were brought up.
What else do you have on your list?
Home value and headlights.
All right, fire away.
The, the home value, you can never attest and say your home value is going to be worth this or this, as we all know from the past few years. Out of the five homes that we are looking to acquire that we have option agreements with, two of them are foreclosed and one has tax liens. That has a much more dramatic negative impact on neighboring home values than new development. New development almost always, depending on the development, especially if it's residential, has an increase in the neighboring home values. One of the, and then to move on to the shadows about traffic, we obviously took, as we said before, that access through the site out, but what we also did is winged the side of the buildings here and here. So, when traffic comes in here, we've landscaped it and winged the building so that none of the headlights would cross over to Xerxes.
There was one other question that got raised, which was the north-south sidewalk traffic on Xerxes. So, I don't know whether you know this, or maybe this is Carrie, would, would it currently exist on the west side of Xerxes as far as sidewalk? Does that link up with some kind of network?
There's no sidewalk.
There's no sidewalk. Is there a sidewalk on the east side? Okay. Commissioner Olson.
I'm just, are you comfortable with the fact that you won't have parking on Xerxes? Because there will be, you know, traction to be able to park in front of your place?
Yeah, we're, we're hoping that there is no impact on the traffic or parking of Xerxes. That's not our site, we, we don't want them parking there. We, they have ample parking inside the building.
Thank you, Mr. Shimaleski.
Thank you.
All right, I think we've touched on almost all of the topics. So, Mr. Shimaleski, one more. On the site plan, we've talked about the, that northeast kind of pocket park area. The site plan shows some, shows some trees around the edge of that. Do you have plans for how you're screening that from the neighbors, et cetera?
Yeah, and we're working very closely with our landscape architect to try and buffer any impact of our site, especially at grade. So, there is a fence that's introduced also at the north end of our site between the oil change to the north and our site and landscaping. And in that pocket park, we wanted to keep it as open as possible, but also maintain a, a level of a barrier or privacy for the commercial area just to the west and the residences to the north.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Halva.
So, does that mean there's a fence up until the park, and then it's just the trees as the barrier?
I think it's on...
I'll stay up here.
So, it's, sorry, it's right on the site plan right now that's on the screen. So, maybe you, if you could even use the cursor to kind of show us where the fencing begins and ends and...
What we're trying to do is make a vegetative corridor as much as we can without using a hardscape or a fence. What we want to do, though, is buffer some of this direct view from the lobby leasing and this retail area. So, the fence that we're introducing would be basically between these two nodes there. It would not go the full length of the site.
Okay, and then the north side of the park area is just vegetation?
Heavy landscape, yes.
Okay. Because there's a resident to the north of that?
Correct.
Right. Okay, any other questions for Mr. Shimaleski?
Great pronunciation of the name, too, by the way.
Thank you. I grew up in Chicago, so...
All right.
All right, discussion from the commission. Getting a lot of information, thoughts? Not all at once. Commissioner Olson, get started.
Okay, well, I just, I think, you know, you've kind of been getting a little bit of where I'm standing, but I understand the economics of it all, and, but I'm still a little concerned with the height on Xerxes, and so I'm struggling with that a little bit. That's about where I am.
Commissioner Lee?
I, I'm just, wanted to ask this question, because I don't know if this had come up during this, the plan review, sketch plan review. When the city takes a look at these individual parcels, first of all, I think that developers should be commended for actually saying that that portion of that northeast corner would be green space. But is there a framework that we have ever looked at for that general area about how this pedestrian traffic and flow is going to happen? I mean, I'm aware of what we've done, say, behind the target, to establish that as a zone. But this is, this is another area where we're, you know, key area, we're trying to bring people across from York over to the Southdale side. So, are we always going to be looking at pieces in terms of individual? It'd be nice to, I think somebody, one of the speakers mentioned earlier that, that these things are just not done, not trivial, but make them deliberate as part of something that could potentially come down the road as development continues. It would be nice during the sketch plan review that we understand what that is, or at least have a general understanding of what the framework would be, so that when, if that is the time for us to give those comments, we're, we're speaking in, in terms of that. So, I think that really when I look at that park, that we probably could be giving some, some more direction on that if we had, if we had as, as a commission or a direction from the council as to what, what that needs to be designed in terms of. This, is there anything that, that anyone's aware of on the commission who's been on the commission in the past?
Well, so I hear you, Commissioner Lee, I hear you asking kind of two different questions. One is kind of the park or pedestrian plan for that Xerxes corridor, but then also the York corridor and the, and the ability to cross York. Is that the other part of your...
Yes, if, if we're making the assumption that there's people on that side that want, we're trying to get people from the east to the west, assuming that, you know, that's the Southdale area. Where are these corridors that we would expect people to go? And if they, in fact, don't exist today, if, if we, does this park become meaningful, or should it be something else? You know, we could actually be speaking in terms of that, have we, if we put a little thought into that.
Sure. Carrie, anything, any light to shed on this? I know we have a kind of sidewalk plan and pedestrian plans. I don't know whether the Park Commission has addressed these kinds of things. It wouldn't be our property, so I'm not sure it's a park in that sense, but...
Right, there wasn't park dedication required as this, as part of this.
And why is that?
Because there wasn't a, because it's, they're not plating the property. If they were creating a new lot, we could consider park dedication.
So, they're going to leave six separate lots?
They would combine them all.
Oh, and that doesn't count as a plaque?
Correct.
All right.
That's right. I'm not aware of any specific study that's, that's gone on, on this side of, of York for pedestrian planning. But as was touched on earlier, with the apartments that were approved, the idea was focusing on that Cub Foods intersection and getting the crosswalks in across there. So, I think that the thinking that went into this site was, let's get sidewalks on both sides. Kind of, this site does its part, so it would be part of a sidewalk network. You know, it's piecemeal at this point, but the idea is, as each of these sites develop, that we acquire the sidewalks to get people from this side of York over to the other side into Southdale.
And so, we'd be coming, they'd come this direction, east to west, and then head up towards that Cub Foods intersection and cross there?
Correct, to the south, down to that intersection at the stoplight.
Okay.
In a non-PUD development scenario, do we have the ability to require sidewalks along York and Xerxes?
We do. Even if it's just a site plan, we can require sidewalks. That is, that is in our codes today.
All right. Anything further, Commissioner Lee?
No, that's, that's it.
Other comments, questions? The request that is in front of us is preliminary rezoning from the PCD III Planned Commercial District and the R1 Single Dwelling Unit District to PUD and a preliminary development plan. Correct, Carrie? Those are the two things we're being asked to act on this evening?
That is correct, yep.
Commissioner Carr?
Are we considering two things or three? We're just looking at this. Don't we have to, isn't, it says, well, we have to look at the amendments to the comprehensive plan?
Well, we have to, the comp plan, too, right?
So, that's one, and then the other two are... And then the other two are the PUD request, and the other one is the preliminary development plan?
Yeah, it's two actions. It would be action on the three comprehensive plan amendments.
Right, okay.
And then it would be the preliminary rezoning to PUD, and the preliminary development plan goes along with that.
Okay.
So it's essentially two motions on those two actions.
But you're correct. The comprehensive plan is obviously one of the items that we have to take a look at, and that is really three parts, the building height increase, the floor ratio increase, and the re-guiding issue. You know, I think it's pretty apparent from the discussion, I don't hear a lot of objections on the density. And I think that Carrie, in his presentation, talked about this community activity center is, even though it's not technically our most dense district, it's designed to be, to bear that kind of density, and I think this area probably does bear it. And, you know, the re-guiding to community activity center is not, I don't think, a big deal here. But the building height, obviously, is an issue, and we've heard lots from folks along Xerxes on the building height. We've also heard from the developer about the viability of this. This is a site that has sat for some time not being redeveloped, and there's limits to what you can do to redevelop it. So I think the height is something that we have to talk about. And then on the PUD, you know, we have, PUD is relatively new to Edina. We've been doing it for a couple of years now. But one of the concepts that I've always tried to talk about when we talk about PUD is, what are we getting in return? So there's, there are some things that the developer is excused from complying with, and so I guess part of that discussion for us should be, what are we getting in return that justifies the developer not having to comply with those requirements? So I'd invite discussion on any of those topics. Commissioner Schroder.
I need to ask Carrie a question. I thought when we discussed PUDs, we didn't allow it to be applied in a single, in an R1 district. Is that correct?
So you'd have to do the comprehensive plan change first?
That is true.
That is true. We would have to rezone it to something else first. Correct.
That simplifies matters.
There were some people who thought PUD should be applied.
Anybody sitting up here now? All right. Commissioner Carr. Oh, Commissioner Platter.
With that rezone, does it fundamentally change what we're looking at here? Is that, I don't want to say a formality, that's absolutely the wrong term, but does that, does it make a difference to how we approach this, I guess is my point? Love any thoughts on that?
From my perspective, it's not allowed. We can't do it unless, so, I mean, it is a technicality, but I think it's a pretty important technicality.
I'm agreeing with you. I'm just, I guess I'm looking for more clarification on what that means at this point, what we would have to do versus the other things ahead of us. In other words, is that the only issue that we can address now, if that's the case? Or are there other ones in here?
Mr. Chair, there are other things that have to be addressed, but we have to put the process in proper place to prevent whatever we do tonight from being undone through some legal process.
Some technicality of something.
And I think technically, the applicant could request a rezoning to align with the larger piece of property, the PCD III, and then move through the process of going into a PUD.
But they, was that able, is that able to be done concurrently? In other words, is that all tonight? Carrie?
I don't think we're going to sort that issue out tonight. I think it's a good catch. I think we ought to note it, and if, you know, if that precludes us from approving the PUD, so be it. But I also think, in our role as a body that makes recommendations and provides advice to the city council on projects like these, we ought to flesh it out fully, and then they can, they can work with the city attorney and the planning staff to figure out what to do with the PUD question. So I would really like some more discussion kind of about, I think that's a fair issue, an important issue. Let's note it for the council. But let's, you know, I mean, I think the big issue here is the, is the height and the mass on the Xerxes side and what, and whether the property can be, you know, whether the rest of it can be moved further away or reduced in height. I think, and the applicants can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we asked about the question about going higher along York back at the sketch plan, and that the answer was, once you go above six stories, you've got a whole different kind of structural dynamic that changes all of, that has a ripple effect throughout the development. And so I know that was discussed at the sketch plan, was, could you go down to two, three stories, four stories at the Xerxes side and go up? You know, we were kind of inviting them to go eight stories or something higher on the York Avenue side to kind of build a buffer there. But my reaction, my recollection is that that above six stories created structural issues that made that not feasible for them, anyway. Commissioner Carr.
Well, assuming that the area is rezoned properly, I guess I would be in favor of the proposal. I know there's been a lot of issues, pros and cons, with respect to the project. I do think that the shadow study has influenced my decision, because again, the shadows cast are, the most significant shadow cast is in December, which is a dark month to begin with, but it also, it's a very short period of time. I think that the architectural plan is very attractive, and I do think that this is an excellent use of this site and will contribute to the city. So I would vote in favor of it.
Commissioner Olson.
So I agree that it's a much better plan than was presented last fall, but I still think that there might be some work to move it away from Xerxes, and also what Commissioner Schroder was saying with the parking and on York. I just think that there's some way to give a little bit on the Xerxes side, and I also liked the comment about kind of opening it up a little bit more on Xerxes, because you really have all that pullback feeling on York, and you don't really have much of that on Xerxes, which is where the concern is, so, some of my comments.
Commissioner Lee.
I would just have to say that, obviously, that is a site that has been needing some attention for a while, and we have to recognize there will be zones of transition. And I think this is one of those pieces where the transition feels really, it's going to hit everybody in the gut, because it's really the first piece that's happening right on that zone of residential to commercial. And I'm trying to imagine what else could be in there. You know, here we, it's primarily residential. It has a very small retail component. I think it's been whittled down to about as minimal retail as you can have, with it still being economically viable. I do think that with a little tweaking, some of the issues that Commissioner Olson mentioned, that's, it's possible, it's doable. But overall, I think the density and the height is probably where it does need to be. I think that some of the things that we're saying tonight are not insurmountable. So it feels to me like it's very, very close of what it needs to be.
Commissioner Schroder.
I would agree that the transition in use with retail on the York side and residential on the Xerxes side is entirely appropriate. I can't imagine any other division of use across this site that actually works for both streets. I'm concerned about the transition in height, and it's two stories more than what we had at the Miller Project. The Miller Project seems to dominate, just overwhelm Xerxes, and now we'd be adding two more. Even though it's maybe pulled back further, and the Miller Project might have different topography, I think it just, it still seems to me to be too high along the Xerxes facade. And part of my exploration about how you could adjust the site plan is to set the building, if it has to be six stories because of economic reasons, to set it further back in the street and actually create a space of value between the edge of the building and Xerxes, so that it's not just a setback. When we deal with PUDs and are trying to create something of value to the community, it's not just always about how you deal with green systems or stormwater or walking. It's about creating attractive places, places of value. And I really don't see that being created yet, because the approach to site planning has been accommodating parking and setbacks in the places that are left over.
All right, so my perspective on this, I love what you've done with the Xerxes side in terms of that kind of walk-up, more residential feel, having the entrances right there that are authentic, that have got a sidewalk, that have got a stoop, that feel like that. Part of the reason I was exploring with my questions, the ability to step back further is, I think if it kind of had more of a two-story feel, being that close might be more digestible and feel more residential like the properties across the street do. I understand the mechanics of the, you know, the plumbing stacks and the vertical and how you've got to stack the units on top of one another, and so why, that might be an impractical issue. But I can't get over the amount of big parking field in front of the building on the York Avenue side. That's the part that, you know, if we could, I think echoing Commissioner Schroder's comments, if we could push the entire building further back toward York, further back away from Xerxes. And that's why I had that conversation with the applicants about, you know, the parking field and what do you need? And I was interested in Commissioner Schroder's conversation with them as well. And I understand the restaurant is going to need more space than retail is going to need, but it does leave that six-story side on the Xerxes face more prominent. And if we were right up against York and that was the case, you know, I might feel differently about it, but it just feels to me like there's room to move the entire structure toward the York side on the site. So that's the, that's the big stumbling block for me. Commissioner, Mr. Teague.
If I might just offer a suggestion on our procedural issue here?
Please.
Because this is a preliminary rezoning, and the site has been properly noticed for a rezoning, I might suggest, if you're inclined to move the rezoning forward, that the residential pieces be rezoned to, at least on a preliminary basis, to the PCD III zoning district. That way, when they come back through the second for final rezoning, that maybe we could consider the PUD at that time. And with that recommendation, we would have the city attorney weigh in on our issue with the R1 not being eligible for a PUD rezoning.
Well, I mean, it strikes me as such a technical legal issue that, I mean, I, you know, I don't know how you can do the rezoning without, you know, you're going to have to have a preliminary rezoning and a final rezoning, so is it really a PCD III if you've only preliminarily rezoned it? And I don't know that that changes it at all. You got us in this fix, Commissioner Schroder. Maybe you can... Commissioner Carr.
Well, could we, should we table this? I guess that's my question, since we have come up with this issue and we haven't identified a fix for it on the rezoning issue, which appears to be a real issue. Would it be more appropriate to table this? I don't know if that's a detriment to the applicant? Or whether we could approve it, subject to a rezoning review by the city attorney? But does the planning commission need to vote on the rezoning issue as well?
Yeah, I mean, I guess my feeling on that is, that technical issue can be handled by the city attorney and the city council. I think what they're looking for from us is what's, you know, does this, would this make sense, assuming that a PUD would be available? That's kind of the application that's in front of us. And, you know, a motion could include the caveat that if it's not, if it's not technically permitted, then, you know, obviously, we're not, we're not supportive of it if we can't legally do it. But I think that the, you know, the kind of comprehensive plan change that increases the height, as well as this particular project at the six stories in the manner that it's being proposed, is that something that we're supportive of? And if so, why? If not, why not? Commissioner Schroder.
If we were to recommend to the city council they not approve a comprehensive plan amendment, then do we not have to deal with the rezoning issue?
Again, I, my own view is that our role is an advisory one, and they may take a different view on the comprehensive plan. I would want them to have the benefit of our advice on the zoning issue if they did take a different view. So I'm inclined to give more rather than less, and then let them sort out whether they need that information or not. Commissioner Platter.
So this is a very difficult one for a lot of reasons. I really like what the applicant has done with the site. Obviously, it needs to be, something needs to happen there. It's been there for a long time. I like that you listened to our comments previously and you modified the site appropriately. It's a lot better site because of that, I believe. I'm just having a little bit of heartburn over the Xerxes side and the height on that issue. I know you've done some things there, but I'm coming down on the side, I believe, that there's another, another try needs to be taken as to what's on the Xerxes side and that height is, maybe it's not a setback, maybe it's architectural or something there with the residents across the street. It is a, you know, a large piece, and is there another step, whether it's parking, limiting parking from York, or there's something looking to reduce the mass, the breakdown, something on that side? I just think there's another piece here that we may not have stumbled across yet, but that we need to look at from that side of the road. I really like the rest of the project. That's really my only piece that I'm stumbling on right now, so I guess that's where I'm at on it. And do we, is there a motion to be made here as if the zoning is not an issue per se? Are we, is a motion to be made on the comp plan to approve or not?
Yeah, so I think there's two motions. We need a motion on the comprehensive plan proposal, application, and we need a motion on the PUD. And if that, you know, includes a condition or a caveat about the legal issue that Commissioner Schroder has raised, so be it. Before you would make a motion, though, Carrie, can you remind me, you know, some of the folks who've commented tonight have raised the, you know, kind of raised the question, well, what if there isn't a boundary here? So let's say that Xerxes is not the boundary... is not the boundary between Richfield and Edina, and let's say that that's an R1 district. Is it merely a setback requirement?
Correct, it is.
And it's a broader setback requirement than would ordinarily exist. It's twice the height instead of
Correct.
one times the height.
Right.
And right now, they fall, you had it in your report.
They're 18 feet short.
They fall 18 feet. So if it wasn't a PUD, they would need an 18-foot variance
Correct.
from that Xerxes side because of that height.
Right.
And the side yard setback variances that they would need are a function of just one time, because that's commercial to commercial?
Correct.
Okay. Commissioner Carr.
Is it appropriate to make a motion at this point?
Please.
All right. I move that the planning commission recommend that the city council approve the request for the comprehensive plan amendments, subject to the findings of staff, and also that we recommend, should these be separate motions?
Yeah.
Okay, that's the first motion.
Let's do the comprehensive plan one first.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second to approve the comprehensive plan, the proposed comprehensive plan changes, subject to the findings in the staff report. Further discussion. I'd say for myself, I am not opposed to six stories in this area. I think, I like this building. I just don't like it as close as it is to Xerxes. And so I could definitely see six stories, especially on York. I think at the sketch plan, I was clear that I could see, I'd be willing to tolerate more than six stories on the York side. I understand the logistical construction issues that go along with that, but that's my, so I'd be in support of the motion to amend the comprehensive plan. Further discussion. Commissioner Carr.
I did move approval of this, but
You're going to speak against it?
No, I'm going to speak in favor of it, but just to clarify for everyone that, as you mentioned, what we're voting on, on the comprehensive plan amendment is simply building height, floor area ratio, and the reguiding, the land use. Those are the three items that we would be approving or recommending to the city council.
Correct. And as I said earlier, I don't think that the floor, the density, or the, you know, including this in the community activity center is, I mean, those seem not objectionable to me. Commissioner Schroder.
I just need to proble with that. So you don't object to six stories here. That means that we're amending the comprehensive plan for this, recommending that be amended. That means that six stories could happen, and it could happen closer to the street, should somebody be able to make the case that the six stories is not objectionable to whatever is going on across the street. Is that correct?
Well, if it was a PCD III, they'd have to be 18 feet further back. And I'd be okay with that.
Which happens to be a parking stall length.
Further discussion. All right, we have a motion and a second. I think, Jackie, we should do a roll call on this.
Yes, Commissioner Schroder?
Nay.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Commissioner Olson?
Aye.
Confused.
So the motion is in favor of the changes to the comprehensive plan?
But do we still have the ability to
You can vote differently.
Influence on the whole site plan. So we're saying, okay, I'll say opposed.
So nay.
Nay.
Commissioner Carr?
Aye.
Commissioner Platter?
Aye.
Chair Scott?
Aye. That motion carries four votes to two. All right, Commissioner Carr, did you have another motion?
Yes, I do, and that is, I move that the planning commission recommend that the city council approve the preliminary rezoning to a PUD, subject to the staff findings, as well as subject to proper rezoning and review by the city attorney.
Is there a second?
I'll second, but if it's appropriate here, I'd like to add something to that. It's a friendly amendment. Would this be appropriate to add the affordable housing piece in there?
If you, if it's not objectionable, then the mover.
It's not objectionable.
That's already in the conditions.
Is it in the conditions?
That was in the conditions? I thought you said that was, okay, fair.
All right, so we have a motion and a second to recommend to the council the preliminary rezoning from PCD III in R1 to PUD, and approve the preliminary development plan, subject to the zoning being permissible per consultation with the city attorney. Commissioner Olson.
I say, I think what the condition that was missed was the Hennepin County recommendation.
Right.
Is that condition acceptable to the mover and the seconder?
That was a left turn lane into the site.
Oh, it was the buffer median?
Landscaping on Xerxes, additional six feet of buffer landscaping.
So the condition is what, approval by the county?
Commissioner Olson, maybe you can articulate that. You had made this point very early on when we were having a discussion with staff.
Okay, let me find that.
I believe that Mr. Teague said good catch in response to that.
Okay, so it was a letter from the Hennepin County Public Works, and
And what page of the packet is that?
I'm on A62. I just know that they had a recommendation that, did you see where it was? A59, thanks.
So the letter...
A59, okay, so it was an email from Jackie Huganknacker, butchering that name. And it was, they encouraged developer to widen the boulevard and move the trees behind the six-foot required clear zone. So I just would amend a condition to include meeting the recommendations from the email from Carl Stuah, hands again, Stuah.
And is that condition acceptable to the mover and the seconder?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. So with that additional condition, further discussion on the motion. Commissioner Alva.
So does this motion include, or is it separate from the preliminary development plan?
So it includes the preliminary development plan approval.
Okay.
Commissioner Schroder.
So by approving the preliminary development plan, are we locking them into these setbacks and this configuration of this building on this site?
Yes. I think that's right. Certainly, in our PUDs, that's, we expect that exactly what the plan is, is how it would be rezoned. Further discussion. All right, hearing none. Jackie, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Schroder?
Nay.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Commissioner Olson?
Nay.
Commissioner Carr?
Aye.
Commissioner Platter?
Nay.
Chair Scott?
Nay. So the motion fails four to two. I would entertain a motion to recommend denial.
Yes, I would give that motion to recommend denial.
And is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion, since we don't have, you know, we've had a lot of discussion about what our objections are to it. Do the mover and the seconder care to elaborate further on what the rationale is? Okay, just kind of taking into account the conversation that we've had thus far.
Well, just, please, clarification would be, I did vote for the comp plan, but I initially voted against the layout as given to us, right?
Okay. All right, is there further discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Jackie, if you would call the roll.
Commissioner Schroder?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Commissioner Olson?
Aye.
Commissioner Carr?
Nay.
Commissioner Platter?
Aye.
Chair Scott?
Aye. So the motion to deny, to recommend denial passes five to one, and I think that concludes our business on this item.
This will be scheduled for a public hearing at the city council on May 6th, the first Tuesday in May.
I want to thank everyone who came, the applicants, as well as members of the public who testified, very thoughtful comments. I know everyone has worked very hard on this. I appreciate all the patience that was demonstrated in this ability. And this will now move on to the city council at its May 6th meeting. All right. So the next item on the agenda is site plan and variances for border foods, 3210 South Dale Circle, Edina.
Okay, thank you, Chair, members of the commission. This property is located just north of the previous site on South Dale Circle. It's the existing Taco Bell site, just south of Best Buy and north of the McDonald's on the east side of York. It's an aerial shot of the existing restaurant on the site. The applicant's proposing to tear that restaurant down and build a slightly smaller, just over 1,800 square foot restaurant. And this is another project that did go through sketch plan review with planning commission and council. So just to point out some of the additions that were added to the plans from sketch plan, you recall there was discussion about the sidewalk. The applicant has added that. There would be green space that would be separated between the street and the sidewalk. It's a little hard to tell here on this graphic, but there would be a boulevard-style sidewalk. They have turned the menu board slightly to the south to try to pull it away from the residential district. They've added outdoor seating. That was a feature that was not included the first go-around. They've included a bike rack on the corner of the building. So the building itself would be constructed of primarily ephes, a stucco-like material with some stone veneer. The applicant is, will show a materials board, and we'll go through that in a little bit more detail, just to show you a few of the elevations. So this request requires a parking setback variance from 10 feet to four feet on the north and south lot line. The existing conditions out there are a three-foot setback, and variances were granted previously for that three-foot setback, a front yard building setback variance from 35 feet to 22 feet, and a variance for the side menu board facing a residential area. And it's real close as far as actually needing a variance. It is located on the south side of the building, but a portion of it does, is on the side that faces the residential area, so they are seeking a variance there as well. So the primary issue for consideration is the proposed new Taco Bell restaurant and the associated variances that are required reasonable for the site. Staff believes that it is reasonable. The uses, again, are permitted. They're existing out there today, including the drive-through. The applicant would be adding a slight additional green space from the residential area to the east. They would be increasing one foot, well, it's not green space, but it would be additional pervious along the south lot line. The variances themselves, again, you see the location of the reader board. It is technically on the side that faces the residential area, but again, they are facing it more to the south. The current reader board is located directly behind the building, so closer to the residential area. They have added the pedestrian connections that I mentioned before. The practical difficulty is caused here by the small size of the site, extremely difficult to locate any building and still provide adequate parking on the site. So the variances are reasonable, given the size of the lot and what exists out there today. They would be providing adequate stacking space, four spaces is required behind the menu board. The code does comply with that. Based on the perimeter of the site, overstory trees that are required are 13, and they're proposing 16 trees. So with that, all of our performance standards are met, again, with the exception of the variances that are requested for the front yard setback, the two parking lot drive aisle setbacks, and then again, that location of the menu reader board. So with that, staff is recommending approval, subject to the findings and conditions that are outlined in your staff report.
Thank you, Carrie. Questions for Carrie? Commissioner Carr.
I just saw it flash by. I don't know where it is, a sign. It looked like a taller sign that's separate from the building. What are the city ordinances on those signs? And is that
Pylon signs?
what's been there, or is that something new?
Boy, you know, I'm not sure. As someone who goes to that restaurant, I can't picture the existing sign. We haven't reviewed it for compliance with the sign ordinance, but they haven't indicated a desire for any variances for the signage. They would have to obtain a new sign permit that would have to be code compliant.
On your chart on page four, you identify the variances that are required, and the final, at the bottom of that chart, menu board and audio system, the standard prohibits it from being located on the side of the building that faces residential property. I thought they had moved it around to the side.
It is to the south, but technically, if you were to draw a line
Oh, because it extends beyond the building?
Extend it out, right. It falls within that area that
So it's not facing residential, because that's one of the changes they made, right?
It is.
It was kind of half-facing the residential. Now it's facing directly south.
Correct.
Okay. Other questions for Carrie? Commissioner Kilburg.
I just have a question. If you go to the, in our packet, it's on page A12, it's one of the first model views you showed us. It shows some like, or maybe it's just a perspective, but it shows some rather large, like, utilities on the top of the building, and in none of the other graphics you see that. So is that being screened by that, kind of that feature, the crown around it? Or is it just not shown in any, I think it's one before that, or
So does the parapet cover it?
Do you see those things? Are those included in the building height, and will those be seen from, like, a street view? Do you know?
Yeah, they're not included in the building height.
They just seem rather large.
They would be required to be screened. I'm assuming that this element here is rising up slightly above the roof line that would provide screening of those
Okay.
mechanical equipment.
All right, good question. Other questions for Mr. Teague? Commissioner Lee?
So I'm just confirming here. So we can best see the green buffer on the other side of the sidewalk, probably on the site plan, and then I'm looking at A18 in our packet, maybe? So you are saying there is a buffer strip. The sidewalk is not, the edge of the sidewalk is not the curb?
Correct. The edge of the sidewalk would go right to the property line, so within the right of way would be the green space.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any further questions? All right, thanks, Carrie. All right, thanks, Carrie. We'd welcome the applicant to come forward, introduce yourself, and tell us about the project.
Mr. Chair, commissioners, my name is Barbara Schneider.
Welcome back, Ms. Schneider.
Thank you, Mr. Stanton. Our office is located at 5425 Boone Avenue North in New Hope, Minnesota, 55428. Thank you very much for reviewing our project. I believe we incorporated all of the items that we received, both from this planning commission as well as city council. I would like to offer a point that Mr. Teague did not offer, is in our stormwater design, we have excess capacity there in that project, so we will be able to land bank, or store that capacity with the Nine Mile Creek District, and we have applied for that permit as well, and they approved it at their last meeting. We, we did incorporate sidewalks, outside seating, bicycle rack. We've made kind of a cozy little area there in the front of the building. As this question on the sign that Commissioner Carr had, that is an existing pylon sign. We do not anticipate changing the height, and our guy that we call Sign Guy has had that conversation with city staff, and we've gotten that answer. Commissioner Kilburg's question on the two outlines that you see on the roof, those are mechanical equipment. Our parapet height is of such height that those are not visible from the street. They're screened. It's somewhere around eight to 10 feet on the, on the height of the parapet, and that's why you don't see those items on some of the other model views that we've shown.
So, you could have a person walking around on the roof and be screened, unless it's a really tall person.
Commissioner Stanton, yes, a person of my stature could not see over the side, but perhaps someone taller, you know, could, eight, eight feet.
There you go. Questions for Ms. Schneider? Well, we'll get to the discussion in a minute, because this is a public hearing, and I want to open that up. Thank you, Ms. Schneider. Oh, now you have a question. Commissioner Platt.
Quick. We did have a couple of quick questions.
Come on back up, Ms. Schneider, sorry.
So, thanks for incorporating a lot of these things. I just had a question mainly along the rear of the site. Is there a fence? I guess rear, when I'm saying on the east side of it. Is there a fence there right now?
Commissioner Stanton, Commissioner Plattner, yes, there is a fence there, and I believe it's our fence to maintain and take care of, and it's, and it's on the property line.
Is that being maintained and taken care of?
There's one post that's broken and hasn't been fixed for two years.
I'm sure you'll fix that now, right?
I'm sure I will.
The other comment is, maybe because the fence is there, that's what I was asking about the landscaping next. It looks like you, I don't want to say it's not really buffered up, but because of the fence there, does that take some of the way? So, one of my suggestions is just that, you know, look to see if that can be densified in that landscaping along the back row there.
Sure, to beef it up.
Yeah, to beef that up. And then, they're kind of minor comments, but, you know, just in the respective impervious area. It looks like kind of in the northeast and the southeast corners, you could almost make a little wedge of impervious area sticking out in the parking lot, you know, where you're not, not the drive aisle, and it's not, not a parking space. You know, both that little wedge right in the southeast corner, for example, can impervious area be, you know, kind of filled in, make a, does that make sense? You know what I'm saying?
On what corners are those?
Southeast corner. There's not a, there's a wedge, you know, an extra spot, not an extra spot. The stall goes right to the edge, and then there's about a, I'm just, about a four-foot piece there. Can that, can that be made impervious area also? And then a similar thing up, if you just mirror that up towards the top by the trash enclosure.
Pervious, you mean?
Or impervious. I'm, I'm sorry.
Not impervious, but make it grass.
Make it a pervious area. Make it opposite of what it is right now, which is impervious. Yes, thank you.
Commissioners Stanton, Commissioner Plattner, we will take a look at, at doing that. We're trying to get the site to drain. It's pretty flat over there, and we will, we will do our best when we go through with staff review on, on, on the civil portion of it.
Yes, just trying to pick up every pervious area we can on these sites.
I'll do that.
Thank you.
Very good.
Those are my comments.
Any other questions for Ms. Schneider? All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
This is a public hearing, so we'll, at this point, open the public hearing and ask anyone who has comments to come forward, state your name and address. Glad you could be with us for both public hearings this evening.
Yeah, I'm interested in both. Todur Bryanov, 6616 Zerix Avenue South.
Welcome back, Mr. Brown.
Thank you. The neighbor to the property on the east. I do have a few concerns, and one is regarding the garbage. And what I've noticed from living there for 15 years is that the squirrels that live around the trees are living off of that garbage, and a lot of the wrappers are coming into my backyard, and it's, I'm not, I'm sure it's not your fault. It's the squirrel's fault, but it's, one of the things that amazed me when I moved in the house 15 years ago was that all along the, the fence, there were just little plastic bags and, you know, wrappers from food, and I was trying to figure out who would throw that over the fence. It's a relatively high fence, that it would land so close to it, and behold, one morning, I'm having my coffee, and I look at a squirrel sitting in the tree unwrapping food and tossing things back and forth.
Did he go through the drive-through?
I have no idea that. I did not ask for a receipt or anything like that, but, and the other thing is, obviously the noise from the garbage trucks in the morning. I'm not sure if there's something that can be done about that. I would love to see something happen on that end, and are you planning on having a newer filtration installation possibly for, from the kitchen? Because I can't tell whether it's from McDonald's or Taco Bell, but.
Oh, the venting, the aroma?
The venting, yes. It's mornings, summer, winter, doesn't really matter, excuse me, doesn't really matter. It's always there, so.
All right.
Those are my points. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Other comments from members of the public? All right, seeing none, I'd take a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
In a second? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, say nay. All right, so the public hearing is closed. Ms. Schneider, could you perhaps come up and address the squirrels that are patronizing your restaurant? Actually, I'd be interested in how frequently the garbage is, is that a daily deal?
Commissioner, the garbage is emptied five days a week.
Okay. And is there a, you know, I assume, is there a screening for the trash container? Is it behind a fence, or?
I'm, I'm sure that it's probably a front loader that lifts the container up and over the back. I will talk to the trash company about the hours that they are there. You know, most cities have regulations about that, hour pickup and that sort of thing, but I will check into that and find out about the trash.
And then, you know, the other question on the garbage would be whether it's secured or, you know, I assume there's a lid, but it must be.
It is, it is a lid, but obviously, the squirrels in Edina are very, very intelligent squirrels.
We're always above average.
Yes. I will take a look at putting, enclosing the dumpster at the top.
Oh, okay, that, that might help, yeah.
And if that doesn't work, I will be back with animal control to talk about squirrels.
All right.
Aroma, I would say that a new equipment at the restaurant will make a big difference in that. We typically do not hear that, and I don't know, I know that if you're near Burger King, and I think there might be a Burger King in the area, or McDonald's, there might be some aromas coming from them. We will, we will make sure that our system is, is, is correct.
So, how does that, I mean, I assume that's the venting from the kitchen, and you're just naturally going to have the kitchen smells going out. Is there some kind of filter system that gets used, or how does that work?
There are filters, and we can, we can make, we can work at cleaning that hood system more often. I mean, typically, it's done two times a year, so maybe we can step that up to a quarterly system of cleaning.
And from a, kind of a corporate perspective, do you have a, you know, I assume that you have a lot of your restaurants that are located near residential areas. Do you have a kind of mechanism for fielding complaints or concerns from neighbors?
We do. We have an 800 system, and our owner, operator, Lee Engler, reads every one of them.
Okay.
And if there's a particular customer comment, criticism, or compliment, he gives them to the appropriate department head to resolve and work on.
And where would someone find that contact information?
It's an 800 number that's, that's posted in the restaurant.
Okay.
And everyone has visibility to it, and it's directed to the appropriate ownership of that, of that restaurant.
All right. Might be a good number for Mr. Brown to get. Other questions for Ms. Schneider? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Discussion from the commission? Or a motion, if someone's so inclined? Commissioner Platteter.
I would make a motion to approve, subject to the staff conditions.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Commissioner Schroeder.
Mr. Chair, I just want to point out condition number eight. It says crosswalk should be marked with, marked with duraprint. I think that should be duratherm, not duraprint.
Condition number eight on page? On page seven, thank you, Commissioner Halva. So, not duraprint, but duratherm. Is that amendment acceptable to the mover and the secondary? All right.
Don't want to get the architecture spec wrong.
I just want to say to Ms. Schneider, I really appreciate your, your presentation, both of the sketch plan and this evening. I, I, I was just saying to Mr. Teague today that I think you do a terrific job on behalf of your client for, just in the way you've presented and in the way you've followed up on the suggestions that we've made, and it's been a pleasure working with you, and I will be happy to vote in favor of the motion.
Thank you, Commissioner. It's, 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 it's been a pleasure working through the process. Not all cities do it this way. Thank you very much.
All right.
I would just echo Chair Stanton's comments on that, as far as bringing through the sketch plan and letting us kind of work through that with you, and then bringing it back, and really, there's not a lot of comments at this point, so, you know, hopefully, that was what was intended, and it seemed to work out fairly well. So, I don't know if you have any thoughts for us, if it worked okay, or back and forth, or, you know, from that side, you know, anything we can improve on it?
Commissioners, I would say that the more specific information that you can give your applicants upfront, the better it is, and it's very difficult and sometimes, oh, disturbing, because you really spend almost 95% of your civil money to get to this point in the process. I mean, to get to these calculations, your civil plans are almost done, and you're to the revision stage. So, the application process is, is, is an expensive process, and we appreciate always city staff meeting with us upfront to get, you know, to, to find out what the, what the codes are, and if this, if the project would be agreeable with the city, to get some direction about that. I'd like to think that we do our homework upfront, and that we come in pretty organized and pretty familiar with the codes when we come in, so I think it's a good process.
Very good. Thank you again.
Thank you.
All right, further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, say nay, and the motion passes. So, this is for variances, so is this a done deal, or does this?
This will go to council on May 6th.
This goes to council because there is?
It's a site plan with variances.
Site plan, the site plan is what does it. All right, so you'll move on, on the 6th of May, to the city council. All right, so the next item on the agenda is the annual meeting, election of officers and adoption of bylaws. So, this is the time every year, actually, it's supposed to be earlier than this, but we've finally gotten around to it, where we elect officers. We have a chair, and we have a vice chair, and we have a secretary. I think you all know I'm the chair. Mr. Platteter has been the vice chair, and actually, we have not had a secretary since Commissioner Carpenter resigned back in the summer. He was the secretary at our last annual meeting. So, we need, we need to make nominations and vote on, on a chair, a vice chair, and a secretary. So, I would entertain nominations.
Oh, Mr. Chair, I thought I was the secretary.
Are you?
Maybe Jackie could.
I was going to mention that, too, because I nominated him.
Oh, wow, that's really embarrassing.
So, we were covered.
Yeah.
Wow. I really apologize for that. All that work you've been doing as a secretary has gone unrecognized. All right, I stand corrected. My apologies. That's kind of embarrassing. So, with that correction.
Mr. Chair, I'm going to nominate Ken to have another shot at it. See if he gets notice this time.
As secretary? All right, there's a nomination of Commissioner Potts as the secretary. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, further discussion or other nominations? All right, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, say nay. All right, so one down, two to go. Entertain nominations on the chair and the vice chair.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Schroder.
I'll nominate you to continue for another year as chair, and Commissioner Plattner as vice chair for another year.
There is a nomination. Is there a second?
Second.
Are there further nominations or further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. All right, congratulations, Commissioner Platteter and Commissioner Potts, and I look forward to serving as chair for the balance of the year. I'll try to get right. What's that?
This year, last year.
This, I'm, I'm only here through February.
All right.
Commissioner Shearer and I, and I think Commissioner Schroder, but Commissioner Schroder's term is very murky. He's managed to, it's hard to know. As the sports guys like to say, he's day-to-day, aren't we all? Okay, the one item on the bylaws, and I think those got circulated by email. Is that right, Carrie? I did get a comment, Commissioner Shearer and I exchanged emails today. She was not able to be here, but she did want to raise as a discussion point, and frankly, we don't have to decide it tonight. We can amend our bylaws at any time, but as you, as at least the members who've been on for a while know, we have a provision in our bylaws that prohibits ex parte communications on quasi-judicial matters, and we put this in maybe five years ago or so, after much discussion about trying, the, the argument in favor of it was that we want people who come, who are interested in applications, whether it be the applicant or a resident or anybody from the community, to feel like all of the information that we are basing our decision on is here at the meeting. It's either in the written record, or it's based on testimony that we actually receive here. And we thought that that gave some extra transparency and kind of confidence in the system. What Commissioner Shearer was raising is whether that process, which then requires some of us on some occasions to basically tell someone who approaches us. some of us on some occasions to basically tell someone who approaches us, it might be a friend, or a neighbor, or somebody you meet in the grocery store, or the applicant, and they want to talk to you as an individual, planning commissioner, about the project, we really are required to advise them that we have this policy, and to encourage them to come to the meeting and express that, or do it in writing. And Commissioner Shearer was just raising the point about whether that is, whether we are unnecessarily making people feel like they're not heard by having that policy. And she feels like it's a bit rigid and a bit harsh, and so she wanted to raise that point. I'm probably not articulating her concerns adequately, and I'm sure she can do it in the future. But since we are voting on the bylaws tonight, and that is an item that is part of our bylaws, I wanted to raise that issue and just see if there was further discussion on it. We could certainly proceed with the bylaws as they are, and we could have a further discussion about that at a, at a separate point, as, as a consideration of an amendment to the bylaws, or if people wanted to do something about it tonight, we could do that, too. So any, any comments or thoughts on that issue? Commissioner Carr.
Well, on quasi-judicial matters, which is where you're determining some legal rights, as in the case of these applicants that are coming to us, I don't think ex parte communications are appropriate, because you are deciding legal rights of applicants, and to have any one of us talk to somebody else behind the scenes, and not have everyone here have the benefit of those conversations, I, I think is not transparent, and I don't think it's in the best interests of decision-making. So I would, you know, basically recommend that we keep that bylaw the way it is, which I'm understanding is that it prohibits ex parte communications.
Correct.
Yes.
Commissioner Platteter.
I agree for the most part with that, but my, and it's a slippery slope, I realize, but the rigidity of that sometimes can come across cold to our, you know, people, neighbors, friends, in the way, so I, I'm, you know, kind of struggling with that. I, I get, you know, definitely, everything should be before here, absolutely transparent, but how do you, you know, in the socialist, social world we live in, how do you work that through? So I, I don't know the answer, I'm just bringing up that concern, because it, you know, just, you have a lot of random conversations with a lot of different people, and things inevitably kind of come up along the way.
Commissioner Olson.
I think that actually, having those in the bylaws gives you the ability to kind of take that step back, so I think it's okay to keep them in there.
I think there's nice ways of telling your neighbor, just say, you know, you can explain the bylaw provision, but you can just say, look, you wouldn't want me talking to somebody else about this on the side, who might take a position opposite of yours. You'd want to hear those comments at the public hearing, so it's to benefit everyone.
The one place that I have a little bit of ambivalence, and I think if I, you know, if we thought through it, it might technically not be prohibited by our, our bylaw, but the time that it's been most difficult for me has been on the plan unit development applications, because those are the ones where we're, you know, I, I remember last year when we had the Byerly's project through, and, and what they were kind of saying to us in response to us encouraging them to provide something in exchange for the relief we were providing them from our normal code provisions, was, you know, we can't read your mind about that. And the inability to have any kind of one-on-one conversations about that, I, I think may have hindered that. Now, you could make the argument that that's a legislative process, our PUDs technically are legislative, but it sure feels quasi-judicial, because it's a single applicant coming forward with a request, much like a rezoning is legislative, but it is a single applicant coming forward. So it might merit some further discussion about where the, where the boundary is between ex priority, or between quasi-judicial and legislative. All right, well, I think those are good thoughts. I guess what I would ask for, I don't sense an appetite to make a big change tonight, unless, I know Commissioner Platteter, you had expressed some concern about it, I don't know if you want to make a motion to make a change, or you want to just wait and discuss this at another time?
It was just a comment.
Okay.
No, no, I don't want to make a change.
So then, what I would ask is for a motion to approve the bylaws going forward for the next year?
I'll make a motion to approve the bylaws.
And is there a second? Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. All right, so we have the bylaws for the next year. And I think that concludes our business for the annual meeting of the Planning Commission. And so the next item on the agenda is correspondence and petitions. There is the, the attendance log. Jackie, I know you indicated that, that the computer was giving you a little bit of trouble. All right, very good. I, I was given credit for a meeting that I didn't attend, so I fessed up on that front, and, and I think that Commissioner Olson was docked for not having been here in January and February, and she wasn't a commissioner yet, so. Who we, you know, we want you working ahead, you know. Anyway, I'm sure that'll get sorted out, and the, once again, our packet included kind of the council update on actions that the city council has been working on. So that brings us to chair and commission comments. Any comments from commission members on items that you've been working on that you want to share?
Just a quick comment on the living streets discussion. So we had a meeting about two weeks ago, and the net-net, as we're, there's a, as a policy comes forth, there's going to be a work session with the council on July 1st, I believe. And hopefully, we can get some previews in before that as to what's, what's, what's being looked at at this point. There actually, I think they had a work session with the council a couple of weeks ago on a potential pilot project, was that? In, in an area of the city that they could potentially implement some of these things. As they're implementing these things, they could potentially get grants, you know, for some of the stormwater, some of the streetscape, some of those things, to make it a pilot project, and, you know, go out to watershed district or something to, to get some more monies for that, to do that. So that's in progress right now. I'm not, you know, it's just, it's not a definite or anything, but that's one thing that they're discussing also.
Very good. Other updates, Commissioner Carr.
Well, I would just ask that perhaps Carrie send out the note that we received from a member of the, is it Environmental Commission?
Energy and Environment Commission.
Energy and Environmental Commission, having to do with the tree protection ordinance. And this, this wasn't necessarily a commission vote, but it was the views of one individual who was opposed to the tree protection ordinance. So I would ask Carrie if we could send that to all the commissioners, and perhaps we can discuss that at our next meeting, to see if we should provide the city with any further input. And we can discuss those comments that we've received.
I think that's, when is it due to go in front of the city council?
On May 6th, so we.
So we'll have another meeting before that. I think it would be a good idea for us to hear concerns that might have been expressed by somebody in the Energy and Environment Commission, and if necessary, respond to those. Commissioner Platteter.
Let's have a quick question. Commissioner Schroder, were you on the urban tree task force when it was passed last summer?
I was a member, but did not actively participate in most meetings.
Was there any public input into that?
It was a very tightly-held process.
Okay. Thank you.
So can we put that on the agenda for our next meeting, and, and we can talk about those concerns, and if there's additional communications we want to make to the council on those issues, we can do that? Very good. Other comments? Commissioner Potts?
Picking up on our conversation about ex parte communication, and being approached by, by other residents of the city, issues of transparency, and people feeling like they're not heard. I've, I've heard a lot of that recently from different folks who feel like codes are not being enforced. And in thinking about how to address this, I think about some of our, our professional codes of ethics. You know, as an architect, there's an AIA code of ethics, which includes obligations to the public, and on, on the enjoyable side of that is involvement in civic activities, like being a member of Planning Commission. Some, on the sometimes difficult side is the aspect of it that says if a, if a member is aware of a violation of law or regulation, the member shall report this to local authority. And personally, I, I've done that on behalf of, of some folks, brought, brought things to light. And like I said, I've been approached by, by residents and become aware of, of many violations in residential districts in particular. And I want to mention a couple of them tonight, and then also some ideas about solutions or things that maybe we could talk about, and put in the form of recommendation to council. And these three are specifically from the Minnehaha Creek Watershed District, which is, is something that, that gets followed as part of city code when builders build. There's a site at 5814 Oak Lawn that is well underway with silt barrier issues. In the watershed district, visited it, realized there was no watershed permit applied for or given at all. Construction was just underway, and, and detrimental effects to adjacent properties and, and public infrastructure were taking place. Same thing at, at 4620 58th Street, and after the fact permit has been applied for. But again, the, the process was, was not being followed appropriately. And then also at 58th and Ashcroft, there was absolutely no permit whatsoever when one, you know, should have been pulled. And the, whatever regulations we have between the city and the watershed district, things just aren't happening properly, and I've been hearing more and more about this, and I've been trying to think about some possible solutions to this. One thing broadly that we talked about at our, our work session, I say broadly, meaning the, the whole construction process, is having that process just laid, laid out by city staff in a way, not only for us, but, but for other people in the city, so they can understand it better, and sort of what the checkpoints are along the way, that, that they can expect to be followed. And then, of course, the, the other big part of this is what about the enforcement? How do you insist on compliance? I think the, you know, what the watershed district did in these three cases was simply talk to the builder and say, hey, you owe us a permit application. I, I don't know if that's appropriate in really bringing about change. I, I think we should look at other means of enforcement. When code's not followed, it's considered a misdemeanor, but to, to my knowledge, that's not really enforced in any way. Through the new construction management practices, there, there are some new teeth in stop-work orders. I'm not aware if that's really been used, but I think, you know, if, if there's pushback from, from home builders who say, hey, this is, this is too much regulation, I, I, frankly, I don't buy that. I think these are not onerous things, these are code minimum compliance issues, and the good builders will do them as, as a matter of course, and increased regulation shouldn't be a problem to them. It should be a straightforward thing. So I guess having apologized for, for all of that at, at a late hour, but I think this is something, at least I'm, I'm hearing enough about Commissioner Shearer mentioned it at our work session, maybe others have as well, but I think we should think about doing something to, to bring to council in terms of recommendation to step up enforcement.
So kind of my reaction to that is, and I, and we can certainly have a discussion about it as an agenda item, I want to be careful to be mindful about where our role begins and where it ends. I do think there are, that enforcement, knowledge about the enforcement process, and both in theory and in reality, is valuable to us, particularly in our legislative, but all, whether legislative or quasi-judicial, I think that's important, to know what's realistic, whether we put a condition in, if it's ever going to make any difference or not.
Exactly.
But I also want to be careful to recognize that enforcement isn't our job. I mean, under this form of city government we have, it's, that's the city manager's job, and it's the city council's job to set policy and adopt legislation, and we advise the city council on that front. So I just want to make sure we're, we're in our sandbox as we move forward on this.
Understood. And, and I would say, yeah, for us to have some confidence that when we, when we put together our work group and spend a lot of time rewriting things, we want to have confidence that they're being carried out, and if we're starting to get feedback, I don't know what a significant amount, or what the tipping point is, that certain things are, are not working, I, I think it's up to us, this is a personal opinion, to, to pass that on. So I think it depends on what, what other commissioners have, have heard as well. I can't, you know, just, just bring forth people who are approaching me.
Sure. Well, maybe it's a good item to have in a future agenda, Carrie? We can kind of talk about where the, what the issues are and what the boundaries are.
As I mentioned, at our work session, our engineering department is, is working on this whole review of building permits and follow-up.
I, I do think at a minimum, you know, some kind of presentation at some point about that really, you know, I don't know if it's a case study where you take a, somebody who comes in for a variance, maybe it's just a residential variance, and we give them a variance, and then they go on their way, and what happens next? Where does the building permit? Just so that we understand how a project like that winds its way through the system, I think might be of some value to us as we're trying to act on variances and, and recommend legislation. Other thoughts on that? Commissioner Lee?
I, I would find that personally very helpful. Also, I mean, this is an observation on this side of the table, but I also would be interested in hearing the perspective from the city as well. Have they been getting that similar kind of feedback, their complaints? And that all links back from starting with what is the process, and that we understand what it is. So where are those checkpoints? And it may very well be a very good idea to then form a, a work group off this group, but obviously, the work group would, I would think, have to involve a member of the city staff, obviously, to kind of look at that and add their input as well. So I think starting with sort of the process is really where we initiate it, yeah.
Okay. Well, Carrie, maybe you and I can talk further about how to get that on a future agenda. Thank you, Commissioner Potts. Any other commissioner comments? Staff comments?
None for me tonight.
Brings us to adjournment. Commissioner Lee or Commissioner Olson? I don't know who made the motion the last time. We have a motion to adjourn, is there a second?
A second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Thank you, appreciate your patience this evening.